This is the State Board of Education Wednesday, July 20. And Maureen, if you could start us off by calling the roll, please.
Good thing. Tom Lovett?
Here.
Tammy Colby?
Here.
Kim Gleason?
Hang on one second. I'm going to check the lobby. That might be Kim now. Nope. Jennifer Samuelson?
Here.
Gabrielle Lucci?
Here.
Wild Jepson?
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell? Patrick Brown?
Yeah.
Oliver Olson? Secretary French?
Here.
Great. Well, as Chair Olson had mentioned, he's not available to be here today, so I will be chairing the meeting in his absence. So the first part is, are there any amendments to the agenda? All right. Hearing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? And Maureen, I think, is running this operation solo today, so. Maureen, I'll let you kind of get everyone in. Good morning, Kim. And then what I would do is if there are members of the public who wish to be heard, we'll get sort of a head count of how many members there are and then just kind of divide that time by up into the 15 minutes. So, and if there aren't any members yet, I'll move on with the agenda and we'll circle back just to make sure that we've got everything covered. But at this point, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
And if members of the public are calling in, they should hit star five to raise their hand and indicate that they'd like to be acknowledged by the chair, please.
All right. Well, hearing none, I'm going to leave this item open. But we're going to move on to the swearing in of Gabrielle Lucci as our voting state board member, our newest member. So Gabrielle, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Awesome. So Gabrielle has been with us for a year. The students serve a two-year term. First year as a non-voting member and then the second year as a voting member. So at this point, I'm going to read two things for Gabrielle. The first is the affirmation of allegiance and the second is the affirmation of office. Gabrielle, I'm going to read this to you. It's a question and then you can answer, I do, if you agree. So, "Do you, Gabrielle Lucci solemnly affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont and that you will not directly or indirectly do anything or act injurious to the Constitution or government thereof under the pains and penalties of perjury?"
I do.
"And do you, Gabrielle Lucci solemnly affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of member of the State Board of Education and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons, to the best of your judgment and ability according to the law, under pains and penalties of perjury?"
I do.
Great. Well, let me be the first to officially welcome you on as a voting board member. We'll definitely put you right to work this morning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Gabrielle.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. And so before we move on to the next item, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? All right. So I'm going to skip ahead. This is item D. To review and approve the June 15, 2022 meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been motioned, moved by Kim Gleason. Is there a second? Patrick? Patrick Brown has seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of our June 15, 2022 meeting, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, please signify by raising your hand and saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, it appears that the motion has carried and you have approved the meeting minutes of our June 15, 2022 meeting. Circle back again to members of the public, anyone who wishes to be heard. Okay. Board announcements. I have two quick little updates. The first is a reminder that we are not discussing the Carson versus Macon case. This was the Supreme Court decision that was handed down earlier this summer. The state board members are defendants in an ongoing appeal before the Vermont Supreme Court, so we will not be discussing the Carson versus Macon case at the meeting or publicly. And then the second thing, and this was included in your agenda packet. You all had appointed me as a hearing officer in a tuition appeal case. That case has been voluntarily dismissed without prejudice. So at this point, there's nothing further pending in that matter. And I just wanted to loop you guys in on that. So we never ended up having a hearing and I am sure the parties will get back to me if necessary. Tammy?
Thanks. I had one more item when you're finished with the item that you were just offering.
Yeah, so those were my two updates. So Tammy, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. I just wanted to update the full board on behalf of the Ripton Subcommittee. In Chair Olson's absence, just quickly, the Subcommittee came together on the 24th of June to have an organizational meeting. At that meeting, we had a discussion about the kinds of elements that we would expect and hope to see in our report coming from Ripton, which is due today. And in addition to the required elements that were articulated in Chair Olson's memo to Ripton on May 31st, the Subcommittee identified four additional items that it's asking the that asked Ripton to address. And the first one was any actions the board had taken or will take to tuition students for grades will not operate, specifically including actions related to any agreements the district plans to pursue and designation. Two, the report should indicate whether Ripton plans to offer pre-K or not. And if it does, what actions the board will take or has already taken to operationalize its pre-K program. Three, actions the board has taken or will take to ensure that triple E services will be available for eligible children as they enter the district for the financial modeling and the first-year budget. And they need to specifically account for career and technical education. And last, any actions the board has taken or will take to provide driver's education. Once the report arrives, we have a packed schedule here over the next few weeks to review that report in a substantive way. In addition to the Subcommittee members, we have called upon members of the public with professional expertise that are going to contribute to the review, including current superintendents, special education directors, as well as a former slash retired educational administrators and some technical experts from the Agency of Education. And we have a schedule for those witnesses and for our discussion to commence. And that all begins this Friday on the 22nd. And then there is a schedule that I can share with the full board for when we will be having open Subcommittee meetings and hearings where we'll be getting that with the goal of drafting our opinion in the week of August through the evening. So just a quick update on that Subcommittee and the work that's underway.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and thank you to all of the members of the State Board, the Agency of Education, and the other volunteers who are helping out with the Subcommittee. Certainly, this is a lot of work that's being done in the middle of the summer and sort of juggling competing obligations and trips that have been planned and otherwise. I know it's a lot of work and very much appreciate what you guys are doing. So. Are there any other board updates? Okay, hearing none. Gabrielle, let me pop over to you if you have a student update.
Um, well, it's currently summer and I can say that I'm sure that many students are very excited for summer. I know that my friends and I are very happy about this time to take off, de-stress, decompress, and have some time to ourselves and also time to spend with each other. I don't really have anything else to give you all an update on since we're currently out of school. But I'm sure that in the coming months, I'll be ready to do that as soon as the school year starts again.
When do you go back to school? Before Labor Day?
31st of August. Yeah.
Well, I hope you're enjoying the summer and I'm taking some time off. All right. Well, thank you. And we are kind of burning through the agenda. Any members of the public might wish to be heard? Okay, so we are scheduled to begin our next item, which is the Addison Northwest School District, Mount Abraham Unified School District merger proposal. That's scheduled to begin at 8:40. I don't, well, I'm wondering. Maybe, Tammy, if you're ready, maybe we could have you do the EQS update first, just to kind of.
Sure.
And Maureen, if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, if they wouldn't mind holding on until after Tammy's done, then maybe we can reorder it that way.
Sure. And I invite Kim to jump in here as my co-chair of the committee. Lots going on there as well. Just as a reminder, we have a Subcommittee called the EQS Subcommittee that is giving careful consideration to the recommendations for changes in the EQS that were proposed by the Act One Study Group. Subcommittee has come together a few times. And since we last met as a full board, we had our first open meeting where we invited some guests to come in and provide comment, in addition to soliciting some written comment on aspects of the definitions that are proposed by the Act One Working Group. Those comments are obviously up on the web under our meeting dates as well as the minutes from our meeting. So if you're interested in seeing the kind of comments and discussion that's going on, that's a good place to check in on that. And of course, Kim and I are welcome, welcome the opportunity to talk to you about it as well. Our last meeting was on June 30. It was a very productive meeting and we had nice considerable input and discussion from a number of parties at that meeting. We have a series of meetings now coming up over the next few weeks. We did cancel the meeting for tomorrow. It's a busy week for the State Board and we felt like we needed a little bit more time to focus on some of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. So tomorrow's meeting is canceled. We will be back at it next week, scheduled on Thursday. So, Kim, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Thanks so much, Tammy. I think we had a good opportunity to listen and take in feedback at our last meeting. And I think Tammy and I shortly after that headed out of town. And so we want to make sure that our time is well-planned for next week to circle back to that feedback and gather additional information on process if that's important to help us get through our intake of that information. So that's it. And I'm grateful, as Tammy and I spoke yesterday, that we both sort of felt as though, given this week, it made more sense to be ready to go with a well-planned agenda for next week. So, thank you to the committee for understanding.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from other members of the board? All right. So, thank you. And then I will circle back maybe one last time if there are any members of the public who wish to speak.
Just remind folks again, if you're calling in, to hit star five to raise your hand or use the function at the top to raise your hand, please.
Okay. Well, takes us to item G. And I guess my first question is, I'm wondering if all of the invited members are here and ready to go because we are ahead of schedule. So I just want to make sure that if we proceed with item G, that everyone who's, needs to be here is actually here. And Ms. Rand, I see that you're on the on the meeting. Do you have a sense if you guys are ready to go or would it be better to hold off? We can't hear you. I don't know if you're trying to talk.
It just unmuted her, so she should be able to.
I think we are waiting for one more presenter. So we're very close, but and of course, it's the person who's going to, who's going to introduce the presentation, so.
I can go ahead and sort of start with, you know, my framing of where we are today. Or, you know, we could take a five-minute break if that would be better. Doesn't matter to me.
Jennifer, not to push our agenda too far along, but at 11:50, we were going to talk about future agendas and work plans. Is that, would it be inappropriate to do that now?
Um.
Or not?
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. Thank you. So yes, let's, um. Does that?
Not that I'm trying to get out early here, but.
We'll hit this rate, although never say never. Ms. Rand, is that okay with you? We'll take up item N on the agenda and then we'll come back to item G.
Absolutely. We completely defer to you.
Okay, all right. So, item N is future agenda, work plan, and retreat. So I've got just the first reminder for members of the board as well as the public that our August meeting is going to be held on Friday, August 12th, beginning at 8:00 a.m., which is different. You know, we usually do the third Wednesday of the month. August. I know we've had meetings in the past. You know, we had an August meeting last year. But they don't always happen. We did a doodle poll and August 12th was kind of the day that worked best for both members of the board. So that will be August 12th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. The September meeting also needs to be rescheduled because Chair Olson has conflict. So we are planning to hold the September meeting concurrent with the retreat. Tammy and I were talking yesterday and I know Chair Olson did send out an email kind of notifying everybody of possible scenarios. And I have seen some feedback already from board members. September is a busy time. Probably it's hard to find any time that, you know, all of us could get together. So, one idea that Tammy and I both had was the idea of maybe shifting our meeting to a Friday and then having the retreat on a Saturday. I don't know, you know, fundamentally how that hits other members of the board. You know, whether we could do a Friday-Saturday combination just to try to make it a little bit easier for people who are missing work to attend the meeting to give us some extra time.
Friday night would be hard for me. That's when all of our games are. But I could certainly do Saturday.
Okay.
My question, Tom, if the meeting, if the board meeting was during the day.
I could do that.
And we were, okay, so you could do it Friday meeting, maybe have to step away Friday evening, but be able to come back on, during the day on Saturday?
Correct. I could do that.
Okay.
Not to push that conversation along, but would Friday, September 30th, and then October 1st, which is a Saturday, is that too late?
I don't think that's going to work for me. Wait a minute. Maybe it will, actually.
And Tom, just to double check, because I know it's probably not super easy to get from St. Jay down to Addison County. I just wanted to put out that reminder that I think I thought was that this would be happening in Addison County.
Yeah, not a problem.
Good. I wanted to make sure. It sounded like a lot of travel to me, but that's awesome. And I wonder too, for the regular board meeting part, if that weren't able to be available remotely for those who have conflicts on that Friday. That might make it easier for people to attend and then, and focus the in-person on the retreat part. But ideally, if we can do both, that's preferable. But it probably would help Tom a little with the backing voice.
Yeah, and I know at least.
And others, I bet.
Yeah, I think there is capacity to do the hybrid meetings. So, Patrick? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, September 30th and October 1st are two big dates for me. On October 1st, I'm hosting the next in the series of the Diversity Speakers Series. And you are among the first to know that Dr. Cornel West is coming up as the keynote. So I'm not, and then we have a meet and greet on Friday. So those dates aren't good for me.
Okay. So I think maybe what would make sense is, I'm not hearing any like fundamental disagreement with the Friday-Saturday scenario. So I think maybe offline, we can have Maureen send out a doodle poll of, you know, Fridays and Saturdays through the month of September and just see, you know, where we can capture the most available members. So, okay. Well, that would be good.
Jennifer, my apologies. Could, I'm going to have a conflict in the weekend before that, before Patrick. So I wonder if just for speed here, could we include October in this or not? Is October out as weekend options?
That would probably be a better question for Oliver. I know that he is unavailable to be here for our regularly scheduled September meeting, which would otherwise be the third Wednesday of the month. So I think he was thinking that we were going to have to shift that date anyway. And we had talked about, you know, dovetailing that September board meeting with the retreat and sort of tying in, you know, hosting it in and around, you know, like there's a lot of activity going on in the Addison Northwest and Mount Abraham School District. So, you know, somewhere kind of around there with the idea that maybe the board could go take a visit to the different areas and just kind of have a better understanding of what's going on. So I think probably, you know, instead of trying to pick a date now, it would just make sense to do the doodle poll and just know that it's coming.
If I may add, I'm recalling from Oliver's nice sort of outline of our things that are on our list to take care of. And there's a bunch of them with respect to these, the murders and some of the unsettled district configurations and things along those lines in Addison County. And I think some of those things have to be dealt with in September. I don't know that some of those things can be pushed off till October. So I suspect we're looking for a date in September. While I, I think we can, we can start to see where we can get a quorum on which weekends and.
I think if need be, we could have September in September and do the retreat in October. But, you know, conceptually, like, let's just see what we can find in September to do both before we start dividing and conquering. Patrick and then Kim?
So as we're looking at dates, we also need to take into consideration space. If we're needing to reserve a space, say, for example, we're thinking of Basin Harbor, October's foliage and busy time in and around Vermont. So we need to do the space concurrently with the attendance.
That's a good point. Kim?
I think we may have hinted at it, but I was wondering with all that is so important for September, if it wouldn't be, and not having to do with the retreat, if it wouldn't be easier to try and find a half a day for a reschedule of our board meeting to address all that's so important coming up in September. And we have historically, before COVID, done meetings on-site in various communities pretty regularly, like in the time before COVID. So it wouldn't be out of the question to do even a regular meeting on a day that is available for the majority of the board. Just even moving it a week earlier or a week later on that Wednesday, you know, on a Wednesday for part of a day. So I also think that if there is so much going on that is board work, that is sort of calendar-driven, we may not have time devoted to more strategic thinking of a retreat in September. It might be difficult to be as, as sort of focused on that part of it. And so maybe it does make sense to separate them. And that may make it easier to dovetail it with an October meeting or something.
Right.
I think we're trying, we keep, we're trying to find a whole bunch of time in an irregular schedule. And I think that is always hard for people.
Right.
Just a thought.
So, okay. Well, I will follow up, you know, after the meeting with Chair Olson. And just know in advance that our regularly scheduled September board meeting, that date will be shifted, you know, based on the doodle poll. And we may or may not tack on a retreat with it. And if it's too hard, I think it's more important to get, you know, the September meeting scheduled because we have a lot of work to do. Okay. As far as future agenda, I mean, there may be other things that sort of trickle up through the course of today's meeting that might get tacked onto that. I do know there should be some independent schools that will be ready for approval, reapproval.
Yes, as many as seven, I think.
Okay. We will also have Ripton. That's on the August agenda. Anything else that anyone can think of? Oh, actually, I could.
I know pupil waiting was on two agendas ago, I think, but I'm not sure where we are on that.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Pupil waiting, I think it was on the agenda for July, maybe, or no, not July, probably June.
Yeah, that is correct. So maybe, Dan, could we put you, pencil you in?
Yeah, sure. I think my recollection of that was on the agenda, sort of an update during the legislative session, and then it became law. So I don't know if, you know, it was originally formulated as a legislative update. But we could certainly talk about the larger policy.
Okay. Well, we can pencil it in for now. And if it makes sense, we'll keep it on. And if we don't need it, then we won't. Just looking. Yeah, at this point, I'm not aware of other things that will be on the agenda. But if anyone else thinks of something, oh, Kim, I see your hand is raised. Okay. Well, and we'll probably have an EQS Subcommittee update, right? Patrick, do you know if there are any other diversity presentations that might come up?
Milton is pending and I'm waiting on my cue from them when they're ready, so.
Okay. Dan and then Tom?
Yeah, under the law, the agency's been directed to develop district quality standards. And we've been sort of keeping a prize of the Act One work, the equality standards. Under that provision, I believe there's a requirement for the State Board to develop an engagement plan for the agency to follow in its rulemaking. It might be a good topic for September for the board to take up how to design that engagement plan.
Okay, so this is for September?
Yes, I think so. It would give us a chance to kind of work through the scope of the work on the district quality standards themselves.
Okay. Okay. Tom?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, just responding to some questions I received here. I'm wondering if we could hear from Secretary French about start-of-school plans with school safety, health, what the agency's looking for as far as starting up school, as far as COVID and other health and safety issues, given both the rise in COVID cases, but also the school shootings and so forth.
Was that a, okay. All righty. Yeah, I think August might be a busy meeting. So, all right, well, these are all great ideas, and thank you all. So at this point, I'm going to table any further discussion of item N. If anything else comes up, you know, we can bring it up at the very end of our meeting. So, all right. We're still a little bit ahead of schedule, but Ms. Rund, is everybody here for item G at this point?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm going to turn our attention to item G. This is the Addison Northwest School District and Mount Abraham Unified School District merger proposal. And I'll just start off with a couple of comments before turning it over to the merger study committee. You have a really good summary in your agenda packet of the factual background and the legal framework for our discussion today that's been prepared. But in a nutshell, the boards of the Addison Northwest and Mount Abraham, well, Addison Northwest School District and Mount Abraham Unified School District created a merger study committee in April of 2021 to explore the idea of creating a unified district to be known as the Addison North School District. Over the course of 11 months, the study committee held regular meetings, created dedicated website pages, and publicly shared meeting briefs and other updates regarding its work. The study committee also held a virtual community forum in the fall of 2021 to explore community values and priorities. In the spring of 2022, the study committee sought feedback on the draft proposed Articles of Agreement through in-person and online methods. And on June 21st, 2022, the study committee voted to recommend creation of a new unified union school district that would provide for the education of all resident pre-K to 12 students by operating one or more schools for each grade beginning on July 1st, 2023. You have in your agenda packets the study committee's report and proposed articles. Today, we will provide the study committee an opportunity to be heard, and you will each have the ability to ask questions and consider any other information that is pertinent. Based upon our discussion this morning, we may accept the report and proposed articles. We may ask the study committee and/or secretary to make further investigation, or we may ask the study committee to amend the report and/or the proposed articles. Critically, the study committee has scheduled a special meeting concurrent with our meeting this morning so that it can consider and act upon any feedback from the State Board if needed in the hopes that the State Board will be able to accept its report and recommendations at today's meeting. You will note that if we, as a board, decide to recommend changes to the study committee's report and/or proposed articles, I have included as a placeholder on our agenda time for us to table this agenda item to give the study committee time to consider our recommendations, and we can then revisit this agenda item later in our meeting. If, at the end of the study committee's presentation, our question-and-answer session and the study committee's consideration, any recommended changes to the report and/or proposed articles, the State Board finds that the proposed formation of a new unified union school district is in the best interests of the state, the students, and the school districts, and aligns with the policy set forth in 16 VSA Section 701, then it must approve the report and proposed Articles of Agreement, together with any amendments, as the final report and proposed articles. There are two articles, or two motions, I'm sorry, in our agenda packet that we will vote on. And if we approve, sorry, if we approve the proposed merger, then the voters of the ANWSD and MAUSD will vote on November 8th, 2022, whether to approve the creation of the new unified district. If the voters in both districts vote in favor of the proposal, then the new unified district will become fully operational on June 1st, 2023. However, if the voters in either district fail to vote in favor of the proposal, no new district will be formed. So that's kind of the framework of this morning's conversation. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the study committee representatives to make their presentation.
Thank you, Maureen. If you would be so kind as to give committee members Troy Parody, Sarah LaPerle, Keith Morrell, and Mary-Kate Kelly speaking powers, or unmute them. And Troy Parody will manage the presentation, if you could enable that as well.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. I have made all those spokes presenters in addition to Patrick, Martha, Sheila. So they should be able to unmute themselves.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, can everyone hear me? This is Troy Parody speaking. Good morning, and I'm going to try and make this all work. So I am sharing our slideshow. I'm going to a presentation view. Can people see the slideshow?
I-
I can't.
Can't. Nope. Okay, that didn't work. Let's try that again. Go back. How about now?
Troy, I think you have to hit the share button inside of Teams as well. I don't know if you're doing-
Oh, not familiar with Teams. Okay. Open share tray?
It should be at the top of your client software for Teams, like camera, mic, share. It's helpful if you put your presentation in a separate window and then hit the share button, and it'll prompt you to select which window you want to share, if that helps.
I think that is open, at least on mine, it looks like open share tray. It's a box with an arrow.
Yeah, I see that. Screen share. Okay.
Maybe.
Now that- Share system audio.
Maybe we can have someone else share it as well.
Okay. Is it going now?
I don't-
Nope. Oh, I went to share tray. Not familiar with Teams. About now? Still no?
No.
Says it's sharing to Teams.
It's coming through now.
You're coming through now?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Got it.
Okay. And is that good? People can see it well enough, or do I need to make it something larger?
I can see it. It is small.
Let me see. How about now?
Ah, that's better. Thank you.
Much better.
Okay. So the problem now is I can't see my speaking parts. Hold on one second. Sorry, I apologize about this.
And let me just suggest, if you want to do your presentation, and then maybe once you're done with that, you can take that down, and then we can do questions, instead of having questions in the middle of the presentation, I think that might be a little bit-
Okay.
Here to follow.
But, yeah, why don't I just get started? If people can see this, I'm just going to get started to not hold, not hold people up. Okay, I apologize. My name is Troy Parody. I am a community member and a committee member of the merger study committee, and Martha is here as well. We have several, I think we have a lot of our team members. I'm not going to introduce everybody in the benefit of time here at the meeting observing today. But a few of us are going to present some of our findings and the work that we've done. So Mary-Kate and Martha DeGraff were our co-chairs, one from each of the school districts in these meetings. And you're also going to hear from Sarah LaPerle and Keith Morrell. They're school board members from the two districts. And our superintendents, Patrick Green and Sheila Soul are also here, along with our consultant Tracy Rind. And we're going to help you with any questions you have after we get through our blurbs here. So this committee is a pretty diverse committee. It's composed of community members who are passionate about the future of our communities, which our communities are really embedded into our schools both directions, and we know the importance of that. We are a variety of people, parents, teachers, coaches, neighbors, grandparents, and school board members. We have committed many, many hours over the course of the last year to look at the charge from the two school boards, which was to learn about the school governance options, the different models available, listen to what people in the community value about their school systems, try to create a model that we think would work best for our communities based on the structures that we have to adhere to and what that might look like, what that might look like, and then come up with a recommendation as to whether or not, should we go ahead with this merger? And what that could look like and how that could move forward based on the current situations in the two districts. It goes without saying that the reason this committee was committed is because of the financial, you know, the situation that is going to be facing us all, which is the ability to continue to pay for the education that we're providing for our students and helping our taxpayers. So what are the goals here? Our goals, oops, sorry, are to- coming down here, to address the five points above in the slide. So the five points are, why is a union between ANWSD and MAUSD recommended? What are our reasons to recommend this? What about the Articles of Agreement, especially in regards to school closure, which has been a big sticking point? What about the Articles of Agreement and withdrawing districts? So, you know, what's happening with that? And then our preference for a supervisory district, and then to answer questions. We have a meeting scheduled for later this morning in concurrent with this meeting, and we are prepared to consider any feedback and respond today while everybody is here. Although it may not feel like this is a lot of time, the reality is that approval is necessary in November in order to begin to have impacts for students by the 24, 25 school year. The process has many steps, and change of this magnitude is significant, and all the time we can have is definitely needed. We want to be responsive to your questions and feedback so that the process can continue and opportunities for students can be leveraged as soon as possible. That said, we hope you'll accept the report and approve the articles as we have drafted them, recognizing the 11 months of study, the multiple community outreach and stakeholder input opportunities that were factored in, the committee's representation and care for the many perspectives, and the efforts to create the best structure possible. Next up, committee member Sarah LaPerle will give you a bit of background about the two districts and explain why a union between these two districts is recommended, ANWSD and MAUSD, considering the projections for the future if a union is formed and what is projected if we continue with the status quo. I'm going to hand it over to Sarah.
Thanks, Troy. Troy, you can go back to full slide.
Full slide.
Showing you full slides.
Okay.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, although I am getting an awful lot of feedback.
Maybe I can shut my mic off.
I don't. I could try to move.
It sounds like there's a lot of water running in the background or something.
My computer is very tired from the past few years. I'm just going to talk loudly, and flag me down if you need me to repeat something. I apologize. MAUSD and ANWSD are comprised of 10 towns, including Lincoln, in the northern part of Addison County. Each district currently operates K through six elementary schools, some of which also provide prepaid programs. There are two elementary schools in ANWSD and five elementary schools in MAUSD, and each has a 7 through 12 middle and high school. Lincoln is expected to be its own district beginning July 1st, 2023. Next slide, Troy. I can't move it. Troy? I can't move the slideshow. There we go. Thank you. Steeple declining enrollments prompted the boards of both ANWSD and MAUSD to form the merger study committee to explore a union between the two districts. Enrollment has declined sharply in ANWSD and MAUSD. From 2012 to 2022, enrollment dropped 27% in ANWSD, a loss of 300 students from 1,131 to 829, and 19.2% in MAUSD, which was a loss of 309 students from 1607 to 1298. While the future decline is not expected to be as sharp, enrollments are projected to continue to drop. Another 15% in ANWSD, or 124 more students for a total K-12 enrollment of 705 by the end of this decade in 2031. And another 13.9% or 181 students for a total K-12 enrollment of 1,117 in MAUSD by 2031. In a decade, ANWSD and MAUSD combined is projected to be about the size of the MAUSD district in the mid-2000s. Next slide. Our committee found that the formation of the MAUSD and ANWSD school districts in 2017 have had many positive impacts, and since they were formed, both have continued to work hard to maintain programs for students and manage tax rates. However, education spending per pupil and thus tax rates remain high. ANWSD partially or fully achieved 19 of 23 projected outcomes from forming a union. They reduced 32 positions, mostly through attrition, and they centralized Addison Central Eprigen Union Elementary School and maintained an overall budget within 1% of the fiscal year 17 levels. MAUSD partially or fully achieved 29 of 30 projected outcomes from union formation, maintained property tax rates that are 33 cents or 17% lower than was projected without the union. They reduced 29 positions, mostly through attrition, and the average overall budget increases were at 1.7% annually. However, education spending per equalized pupil was well over the 121% of average statewide per pupil, spending per pupil, with ANWSD spending $19,175 per pupil and MAUSD spending $18,634 per pupil. While we understand the excess spending penalty is suspended, 121% is still a useful reference point to show how much we were spending. Next slide. If we continue with the status quo to maintain current levels of spending per pupil, ANWSD will have to reduce 40 more positions or 21% of current staff, and MAUSD will have to reduce 66 positions or 23% of current staff. Or tax rates are projected to increase 13 to 15% by fiscal year 27. With current per pupil spending rates and declining enrollments, we know the biggest question is not what can we create, but what can we preserve? Our tax rate projections were developed last fall in 2021. We don't expect changes in pupil weights to help much as increasing inflationary costs and declines in enrollment will likely far outweigh the impact of any adjustments in the tax rate formula. Next slide, please. If the Addison North School District is formed, the ANWSD/MAUSD study- the ANWSD/MAUSD merger study committee believes that if we work together and merge ANWSD and MAUSD into one union, we can sustain and expand programming for middle and high school students. We can sustain and protect high-quality education in elementary schools. We can increase cost effectiveness and slow the tax rate growth, and we can increase equity, ensuring all students have access to engaging, relevant and high-quality learning opportunities. To accomplish these goals, the unified union structure will enable the potential for combined middle and high schools, expanded grades served at the middle level, and cost-effective practices and policies for elementary schools that protect schools and promote collaboration, thoughtful use of resources and learning opportunities for all students. Next slide, please. As an outcome of our study, we concluded that forming a union school district between ANWSD and MAUSD is the best path forward to enhance educational opportunities, provide greater equity for students and increase financial and educational stability in our region. Our study indicates a merged, single organizational structure will provide a more coherent system of teaching and learning pre-K through 12 with a greater ability to provide better outcomes for learners and cost efficiency for taxpayers. With a merger, we can save a combined $5 million annually while sustaining or even increasing programs for students by eliminating approximately 42 redundant positions. This proposed future offers significantly more programming, support and opportunity than an unmerged future without requiring significant increases in taxes. Our recommendation is based on what we believe is best for all students as the most important consideration for our decision-making. We know that there are three issues that have been the center of a lot of discussion in various contexts, and these issues have regional implications. These include provisions regarding school closure. We will talk about this as protecting and supporting community schools, supervisory union services and withdrawing districts. And Keith Morrell will talk with you about the committee's study and preferences in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So the committee understands that closure of elementary schools is a huge concern in our region. We've heard loudly and clearly that people care about their community schools and want to support and protect them. We couldn't agree more with this sentiment. We believe that the best way to support and protect these schools and to ensure that they provide an equitable, high-quality pre-K through 12 experience for all students is for everyone in all of the schools in both of our districts to work together. To that end, the committee spent a tremendous amount of time considering how to address this priority in our Articles of Agreement. Just really quickly, let's take a closer look at some of the key points. I'm gonna read through points one through four really quickly, briefly, a little paraphrased. So regarding elementary school closure, for the first four years of the ANSD's operation, an elementary school for all grades may be closed only with a majority of the vote of the towns whose resident students attend that school. After that four years, an elementary school may be closed with an approval of two-thirds majority of a quorum of the Board of Directors of the ANSD and an approval of two-thirds, the majority of the vote of the ANSD. And also want to highlight our middle and high school obligations. We, as a committee, we want to ensure that the board is committed to maintaining a middle and high school in our district and then structuring these schools in a way that improves the educational experience for students. We think that there are some clear benefits to the way that the committee has ordered these provisions. For starters, it ensures that there are four years before school closure without a town vote is even possible, which will allow schools to operate without concern, excuse me, while waiting for the benefits of a merger to phase in. It also provides a high bar for closure, a two-thirds majority of the board and a two-thirds majority of voters or of the vote is a significant mark to have to achieve. I think that the board thinks that ensures that the ANSD will have to really engage with stakeholders to do the work necessary to make these sorry, I have a guest in here, to make these schools viable before resorting to closure. It allows all citizens to have a say in future, the futures of schools. After four years, this ensures that all voices within our district are represented in the decision-making process. It allows for change at the middle and high school levels that are critical for secondary students. This is very important, one of the key reasons the committee recommended forming a union. We need to improve opportunities for middle and secondary students, and to do that, we need to work together and increase efficiencies. For instance, the options to include sixth grade in the middle school is an important consideration that we believe needs to be available to the future board. And finally, it considers the feedback we heard from our communities and strikes an effective compromise that allows reasonable assurances that elementary schools will be protected and that district governance will not be hobbled and rendered unable to meet future challenges. This article will be included in the warnings and will not be able to be changed without a vote of the electorate. Next slide, please. We believe that school closure is very unlikely, and together we can best support all schools and remaining strong. The committee believes that together all schools can be stronger and more sustainable. Merging is the best way to keep a school open. The committee believes that withdrawals are not in the best interest of students or schools. All students, including those in withdrawing schools and those remaining in the district, are better off together. It is, we believe, actually counter to the goals of those advocating for town vote on school closure to withdraw from the district and to decrease the school, and it will decrease that school's viability in the long run. And as you can see here, there are some significant savings that come from merging together, and those cannot be achieved through withdrawal. Next slide, please. Withdrawals in process, so we understand that the withdrawals in process are important variables for formation of a union. We have been working to understand these variables and to consider ways to support all communities as we work collectively to improve student outcomes. Regarding Lincoln, after our articles were approved and the report was finalized, the committee heard from the newly elected Lincoln School Board that they did not want to be included as his advisory. However, the committee had already completed its report in the Articles of Agreement and included Lincoln as an advisory district. Because the committee has the authority to determine the contents of the Articles of Agreement and because the committee heard your feedback advocating that Lincoln be included as an advisory district and because voters should have a vote in the decision about this opportunity, we don't see a need to change the articles, but we acknowledge that Lincoln can decide to warn the question or not. Because Starkspur has formed its own district, excuse me, one moment. My apologies. Where was I? Regarding Starkspur, because Starkspur has not formed its own district yet, the articles provide for Starkspur to be a part of the MAUSD for a vote in November or not, depending upon whether it is formed as a district by September 12th, the date by which approval of a warning needs to start. The committee and the MAUSD board have worked hard to engage Starkspur in the study process and to address their concerns about school closure, while also remembering that the articles need to be the articles need the support of all communities for a union to be formed. This, our understanding that the MAUSD is working to educate the community on the implications and the impacts of Starkspur's withdrawal. The committee believes that we would be better and stronger together and has done its best to craft the articles to be respectful of all perspectives while positioning the new district to do the work needed to ensure that all students, pre-K through 12, have the opportunities they need and deserve. While we hope Starkspur and Lincoln are part of the new union, if formed, the articles are written so that in the future, it would be easy for them to rejoin the union following the newly clarified process for joining an existing union. Next slide, please. Our community members have been very clear that they want to see savings and efficiencies in the administrative structure. It's also clear that these efficiencies can only be achieved through the supervisory district model. Under that model, we'll be able to see, realize numerous benefits. We can reduce 11 administrative positions, which would equate to about $1.3 million in savings. The opportunities for these savings are important for bending the tax rate increase. This enables more collaboration for equitable learning across the district through shared resources and aligned pre-K curriculum. It streamlines governance and avoids what we call our spaghetti model of governance, which is a tangle of too many governances, structure, you know, governing over too few entities or too many cooks in the kitchen to lean on another food metaphor. And ensures equitable representation in the governance. This committee has worked hard selecting a board composition and voting structures that would ensure that towns, the ANSD are fairly represented. And finally, it's the preferred governance structure in Vermont law. Next slide, please. So as you consider your feedback and decisions today, as well as future decisions about supervisory union services in light of the policy spelled out in law in 16 BSA Section 701, we ask that you do what we did, which is consider students, all students, all children first. After nearly a year of study, we concluded that we are stronger together, and this strength is essential to support community schools and provide the high-quality learning opportunities that students need and that our communities value. Our committee co-chair Mary Kate Kelly will now take over to help with answering any questions that you have. Thank you.
We're happy to take any questions that state board members might have.
Well, I'll start. I have a question. And I guess I have two questions, and it's really just with regard to the language pertaining to closures. So within the first four years, an elementary school for all grades may be closed with a majority of the vote of the towns whose residents do attend to that school as of the operational date of the new unified district. I'm not clear on whether that language means that each town voting needs to have a majority vote to close or whether it means a majority of the towns need to vote to close. So if you have three towns that are, you know, feeding their students into a school, do each of those three towns need to vote by majority vote to close the school? Or if there's a majority vote in two of the three schools, two of the three towns, would that be sufficient?
Yep. Unless someone else wants to take that question. Keith, do you want to take that or?
Yeah, I believe the discussions we had focused around an aggregated vote count. So all the towns as a whole, not as individuals.
Okay, so you would aggregate all of the votes for each of these, you know, fictitional three towns? And if there's a majority vote of the aggregated votes, okay?
Correct.
I'm going to pause there. Secretary French, did you have something to add to that or did you have a question?
I just had a question when it's appropriate.
Okay. And then my follow-up question is after four years, a school could be closed with a two-third majority vote of a quorum of the Board of the Anderson Northwest School District and a two-third majority vote of the voters of the Anderson North School District. Addison, thank you. Is that a similar thing where you would combine all of the votes and like if it's a two-third majority vote of all combined votes?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
I'm wondering, because that was not clear to me. I don't know if that hit other board members the same way. You know, if I could make a recommendation, I feel like it might be clearer if that were specified just so that it's clear to voters when they vote what exactly that process looks like.
We can talk about that. Thank you. I believe that's consistent with the general statutes in terms of withdrawals to have the vote aggregated, but appreciate your feedback in terms of the articles themselves having clarity.
Okay, thanks. So Secretary French and then Tom.
Thanks. I had a question on the slide. It says preference for supervisory district, and you referred to reduction of 11 positions. I was wondering if you could be more specific as to what those positions would be that are being eliminated or would be eliminated.
Keith, did you want to take that?
I don't know if I have the specifics in front of me. If anyone else on the committee does.
If I may, Sheila or Pat might have that. I know one of them is superintendent, but there are additional positions in the study.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that, sure. I don't know that I could rattle off exactly the 11, but you know, in this one, essentially we'd be moving from two central offices to one. So instead of two superintendents, one superintendent, instead of two business managers, one, two accountants, you know. Part of what we need to figure out is really looking at what would the need be? But we think between our current staffing of two central offices, moving into one central office, that would equate to about 11 positions, mostly in, you know, district leadership, like those positions I mentioned. Director of Student Support Services would be included in that. We could look at our HR teams. So really through those positions, we'd be looking at reducing the 11.
Yeah, thanks. That's what I was looking for, whether it was central office centrally. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Tom?
My question, just a follow-up on Jennifer's. I'm assuming that when you talk about two-thirds of a quorum of the board, you'll be using the weighted vote?
Yes.
Lyle?
Thank you. Could you comment again on how you envisioned the middle school and high schools would be configured, say, five years from now? What might that look like? Or is that still a pending conversation?
I can speak to that a little bit.
Go ahead.
So we had a lot of conversations about not handcuffing a future board with our articles. And so they're designed to promote the opportunity to create the best educational opportunity while also providing maximization of efficiency. We are not 100% sure what the future looks like, obviously. And we envision, you know, from our current model, we envision a potentially a unified middle school. So the middle school students from the two districts would come together and combine into a unified middle school. And we envision a potential unified high school. But we're also leaving open the options of, you know, if the board decided in the future with best educational practice to have, you know, high school, two separate high school settings all under one umbrella where we could offer different education and maximize the opportunities available from what exists in those buildings, because not all the buildings are the same. The buildings are in totally fine function and repair, but they don't offer the same services. You know, there's a wood shop and a metal shop at one high school and not at another. There are more gym spaces at one high school than there are at another. There are more up-to-date science labs in one building than another. We wanted to make it available for the future board and the future educational leaders in the community to sort out those options and availabilities as they move forward. So we didn't specify in our articles an immediate merger or alignment of anything like that, but we left it open for that to happen moving forward. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
And we also left open the option for moving middle school changing from 78 to 678 or potentially a 5 through 8. And really, we didn't think we were the best experts to make those decisions in terms of what's best educationally for middle school age students. And so we left that to the board.
Tammy?
Thank you. Given the important weight that the board will have in making decisions, for example, about school closure, I'm curious if you could talk, curious to understand a little better about your decision to have sort of weight, voting weighted, right? According to population as opposed to each town or just, right? Each area having its own one vote and everybody being on equal footing within the board, if that makes sense. I'm curious to hear sort of what your logic was in deciding that? Because again, it's, I think it speaks back to some of these issues around concerns around school closure and small, small communities not being on equal footing.
I can speak to that unless Keith, you wanted to address that. I know you're sort of, we've got you on the school closure piece. Did you want to speak to that?
I'm happy to be your hype man if you need me to jump in at any point.
Okay, so a couple of things. One, we talked about it being more democratic to have people have a voice, according, you know, one, sort of one person, one vote more, more in term, rather than having a small group of people deciding for everybody. I think we also wanted to provide some real protections to schools. And so that's why we have the two-thirds, right? Vote for both after the four years, because we do believe that small community schools are really important. We think particularly through this pandemic, those small schools have done a great job because they've got close relationships with students. But we also don't want the small school, us, one community, because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't want a small group of voters to have more authority and decision-making authority than the community as a whole. And so we want, we are looking at making sure that if it's not the best thing for all students in our, in our new district, that there's more of a voice from everyone and not a small group. Did I answer your question, Tammy?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, that cuts both ways though, right? You know, when you have towns with weighting, you also have the ability for small towns that have one vote for their, for their voice not to carry equal weight intentionally, right? And so like that can go both ways. So I just want to understand your logic and your thought process around that decision, because particularly in the context of this merger and what we're hearing around school closures, that feels particularly relevant. Thank you.
Thanks. And let's, let me just pop over to Donna, because are you, do you have an answer?
I would like to explain just the law behind this, because I think that might clear up some of the questions. In a multi-town district such as this would be, if the towns, the residents living in each town vote to elect their own representatives, rather than it being an at-large kind of vote, then there are two ways that that one person, one vote is accomplished. You have to see what the relative sizes of each town are. And you either apportion that number of seats to each town, or you apportion something less than that number of seats and you weight the votes. It's exactly the same. I mean, it's not exactly the same as far as the number of people, but the representation is exactly the same for the voters. So either you get one person, or you get one person with a certain sized vote. And, and in both cases, your representation is the same on the board. And let me just give an example, because that might just, it might be a little too out there to understand. If you had, for example, three towns that were basically the same population and one town that had, was 10 times the population. Each of those three towns could have one seat on the board, and the fourth town would be entitled to 10 seats on the board. If there is that kind of a difference, what you do instead is you say, okay, maybe it's better for, you know, these, these two towns to have one each and this town to have five, and each one has a double vote, or have two and each one, you know, you sit, you try to figure out what seems reasonable. So in the, in the one situation, I believe that there, there may be more than this, but I know that there's at least one unified union school district that does have weighted voting now. And that was exactly the situation that they were up against. And they felt like it was, it was better to have about the same number of people on the board, rather than have 10 people talking against, you know, one person. And in fact, they said that with their votes, they, they have rarely, and actually they, their union high school before they become a unified union school district had this type of voting. And they said in all those years, they only went to actually weigh the voting like two or three times in several decades, that they would try to reach an agreement that, that was, and so I don't know the reason that they chose it in this particular case, but I think that at times if one town or two towns are particularly large and others are particularly small, it actually will make those small towns feel as though they have more of a voice, because they're not outnumbered by the number of seats on the, on the board.
Thanks.
Hope a little.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Donna, thank you. That's really helpful. And I think it kind of speaks to sort of some of the thought and care that needs to go into sort of this discussion and proposal around sort of the weighting and the votes on the board, particularly when it comes to school closures.
And I will confirm that we did talk about that piece of having the board members closer. It does allow for more board votes, voice from the smaller communities, though the voting is consistent with their population. And that's required under the constitution, so for the one-person-one-vote piece. But it does allow more, and we did talk about having more board votes, more equal per-town board voice.
If I could just jump on that really quickly. It does keep the board size manageable for a district with so many towns in it as well. And we don't have any situation where populations are so disparate between towns that there's an extreme, you know, like a one versus one, 10, as was referenced before. So it seemed like a very elegant solution to some problems we were discussing.
Great. Kim?
Sorry, thanks. I was just going to say, when we went through this in Essex Junction in Westford for the Essex Westward School District, and Westward being much smaller, was concerned that we not do at-large voting. So our, the solution there was four from each Essex Junction and Essex Town and two people each having half a vote. But the conversation at the table never, most of the time as we are taking vote count, we were having to remind ourselves that that was half of a vote each. And just because the conversation, as is the case I found with our student board members, their voice at the table was really impactful and they don't even have a vote. So I think the construct you've chosen offers the opportunity for robust conversation. And at least in our experience, we did not see there to be occasions. It was rare of a split vote that was so close that that would have been impactful differently. And one day, we might get to a place where at-large voting, because all's kids means all kids, is desirable, but it didn't feel safe to our smaller community when we went into the merger in our articles. And so in practice, it was really effective in having people feel heard and building as much consensus as possible in decision-making. So I just wanted to offer sort of a, how it has worked in similar ways.
Great, thanks. Tom?
Yeah, a question about the unified middle school. Would moving the sixth grade into the middle school have any effect on the viability of elementary schools?
So, so we, not as part of the same district. We, you know, we didn't make that decision, so we didn't study it closely. But we would be one district with those elementary schools part of the district. And those schools, we think are more viable as part of one district. We currently have, the two schools each have combined high school, middle schools. So we did hear from our community that having separate middle school from a high school campus was something that community members were interested in. And making those, you know, whether or not sixth graders should be part of that is really more of an educational decision. So we didn't make that. But we think our community schools as part of this district are viable, whether sixth graders are included there or not.
Okay, that was, that was my second question is, is the inclusion of sixth grade important for the viability of the unified middle school?
I think it's less a viability question as a preference in terms of education for our students, what's, what's best educationally for a middle school. And as we've sort of said, we've left that to the board and so that they can study that issue and obtain educational expertise in terms of what, what makes sense for a middle school, whether it's six through eight or seven, eight.
And it looks like maybe someone, and I can't see who has their hand raised.
Is that Donna Russo Savage? DR?
Donna, do you still have your hand raised? Looks like maybe you do. Okay.
Sorry, I forgot to take it down.
Okay, just went back up. There we go. All right. I also wanted to point out that on page 42 of the report and articles, under disposal of property, there seems to be text missing there, because it just says, in the unlikely event that some, so I just wanted to flag that. And I guess my next question is about the issue of transportation. And I did read that, you know, you guys have identified some possible solutions here. And if I identified, you know, challenges with transportation, you know, whether that's shuttle or additional buses. And I think I recall that you are suggesting that this issue be resolved by any elected board. But I'm just curious to know your thoughts, because I'm wondering if you're hearing feedback from parents within your communities as to how big an issue this is for them and whether this is something that they'd like to see a proposed plan before they're being asked to vote on it?
So we have heard concern from community members about the distance or time on a bus. We did have a transportation proposal that was presented to us, or transportation study that was presented to us. And Patrick, maybe you could speak to that. But we think that the length of bus travel can be kept to within the same length as current, but it'll require some, some work in terms of making that happen. And I don't know, Patrick, maybe you could speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah. We used a consultant, a third-party consultant, to study transportation both. So we use that in MAUSD as we were looking sort of within MAUSD for making some changes, but then also broaden that to look across the districts as part of this analysis. And the results from that study from the consultant suggested that there was a way to keep ride times essentially the same as they are now. There would be an increase in cost to transportation to be able to achieve that from what's currently being spent. I think the estimate was somewhere in the maybe $100,000, $150,000 more costly to do so. But when that's offset by $5 million in savings, the, the financial benefit certainly still seemed to be there. And we felt confident that there was a path forward to keep ride times essentially the same, specifically using the shuttle option that we studied.
Can't hear you muted or I can't hear you?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I also wanted to follow up on page 118 of your report. It indicates that 45% of the respondents did not support a merger and another 18% indicated that they were somewhat unsupportive. I didn't see a date of when the data was compiled. And I'm just wondering if, you know, was this maybe before you had towns looking to withdraw? Have those numbers changed? Just looking for some context for those numbers.
Is there someone who can provide that date? I know we haven't done a recent study, but.
I'm wondering, excuse me, if Sheila has some information about those processes of gathering feedback?
Yeah, I'd have to look for the specific date to reconstruct exactly what was happening. It was, it was this early spring that we did the thought exchange. And I'd have to look back to see how the date coincided with the movement within Lincoln and, and of course Starkspur. So I don't have a specific answer, but I can dig a little bit while we're talking about other things and maybe jump back on with a specific date.
Yeah, I'm really, I was curious as much as anything, because I was kind of surprised to see those numbers so high. And if it is kind of explained by, you know, there was negative feeling about the super merger and then most of the negative feeling was in towns that are now in some process to withdraw. I was, you know, just really looking for, for background information on that and didn't know if that is the case, you know, if that makes you guys think differently about, you know, what you're presenting to the voters? Or, you know, if you feel confident that this is the package that you want to present for the voters to approve?
So I, I don't know the exact date, but definitely, you know, in terms of when the, where exactly Lincoln was in the process or Starkspur. But it was definitely after, you know, the Starkspur Save Our School Committee had taken their position, you know, well after that. Not sure exactly in terms of, while the Lincoln vote had already happened, I'm not sure whether the school, the state board vote had happened or not. The process was through a thought exchange, which then, you know, was sent out to everyone. But oftentimes, the people who are more passionate about a particular issue respond more to that type of a opportunity to get feedback in terms of changing our position. I will say where we have come down on this school closure is really a compromise. And Keith, do you want to talk a little bit about? There's also opinions about school closure from the Addison North East Supervisory District that their, their schools and population that are maybe. that their schools and population that are maybe different than Starkspur or Lincoln. Can you speak to that? Thanks.
Sure, yeah, the Addison Northwest. I think there's. I think it would be hard to sell to the entirety of our district articles of agreement that allow for indefinite indefinitely for a single town to essentially veto any larger decision-making process within the district. The articles that we came up with are very fairly neat compromise between the two positions that we've heard the most from, I would say, which is, you know, that no school could ever or should ever be closed without exclusive voting rights of the town that that school resides in versus a more district-wide approach, allowing, you know, as we are joining as a district, turning decisions over to a district-wide process. So that was largely the impetus behind crafting those. That Article fourteen B, as we did, was to try to find a middle ground between those those two positions of allowing a board sort of unilateral authority to close a school with just a simple majority vote. I believe that two-thirds mark is a very high mark to hit. Any board would really have to, I think, community would really have to do its work, I think, to convince that large percentage of the electorate to back a measure like that.
I would say, you know, we shared the information about the declining enrollment and the impact that's going to have on our schools. And that declining enrollment really gets into the middle in high school in the next year and starts to work its way through. So we, as a committee, really feel it's critical to have this merger so we can save monies and still provide the programming for students. And so we tried to find a compromise and navigate the communities that, you know, feel strongly that one town shouldn't be able to make final decision about everything for the whole community and also really protect as much as possible with those two-third votes that give that community plus the four years to give that those communities that are worried that their school might be closed. We also recognize that, you know, there is a opportunity for if in the future there was a vote to close a community school, that there is an opportunity for those schools to withdraw under the new statute. It's a little different than the statute they've gone under. But our understanding is the differences really are to protect students in those communities to make sure that if a school is going to withdraw, that the students are going to still obtain a quality education. Whereas the statute right now doesn't do as good a job in protecting that.
Ms. Sewell?
Yes, I just wanted to give those dates for the thought exchange. So the purpose of the thought exchange was really to ask for feedback before finalizing the Articles of Agreement. So if you're not familiar with Thought Exchange, it's really an open-ended survey. But we did ask some pointed questions at the beginning. What town are you from? How supportive are you about the idea of merger and so forth? And we had asked that everyone watch the video, the informational video before responding. So our hope was that folks had at least some of the background before weighing in. So it was May twenty-sixth through June sixth, so right before the final meetings, right before finalizing. So things were well on the way in Lincoln and Starkspur by then. But I did note that eighteen percent of the respondents were from Lincoln and Starkspur combined. So if that gives you any more context, I thought that might be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it was Miss Kelly's point earlier. You know, you never know who's going to respond. And I think it was, you know, all things considered, three hundred and something respondents that you had over like eight, which is maybe ten percent of the total population. So thank you for chasing down that information. And what's, I mean, I will say that this was a very, very comprehensive report that you guys have put together. The number crunching, the analysis, you know, I can appreciate that there was an awful lot of time and effort that went into putting this together. And, you know, also realized that you guys are probably not in a position that you would have hoped for. And, you know, it's really just a question of, you know, sustaining quality education and programming in the face of declining enrollment. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that because I think it's been a lot of work that you guys have put in to get, you know, to the point where we are today.
Yeah, I wanted to tag on to that. I'd like to commend the committee for, if you're doing your homework, this was a heavy lift and you've spent a lot of time working on it. And I think it's really a proactive approach. And I think that you're weighing quality and equity and fiscal responsibility as you're making your decisions. And I commend that. It's frankly just what I would like to see other districts doing as they're planning for the future. And I would also like to compliment Keith on having his guest arrive on cue while he was talking. You obviously have an appropriate vested interest in all this. So again, I'd like to commend the committee.
Anything else from board members? And we can, you know, I'll stick a pin in this for now. But other than, you know, my question about how votes are tallied and the suggestion that perhaps that might be clarified in the articles just to make sure that the votes are aggregated. And we can decide as a committee whether we think it's appropriate to make that recommendation. Were there any other suggestions or recommendations? I heard a lot of questions. I didn't necessarily hear any requests for amendment. Kim? Oh, you're muted.
I'm sorry, it takes a second. Man, there's a delay. I was just wondering if Donna, and I don't want to put Donna on the spot, but is there anything that she could see that might clarify that language that could be specifically recommended? Because I think that's what I was understanding for the study committee to be able to be, like, they're all here to be able to take our recommendation so that it sounds like they may be able to make that on the spot and we may be able to approve on the spot in terms of the efficiency of their process. So I don't know if there's anything in that language that we may be able to, if even after a break, recommend specific language for improvement in response to that concern. Sorry, Donna.
Sure, I think that it probably could be clarified. I had, I thought that the vice chair's question was a good one. Although knowing what their intent is, I think that this does support that intent. I think that if they, if they were intending it to be each of several towns, they would have set a majority vote in each of the towns who's resident. So I think that this does support what they want, but it would be good to be clarified. I think in order to get that, because, excuse me, because item number one is both the way the language is written, it both encompasses a situation where there, where a school only has students from one town who are attending it. And it also, in the same phrase, is encompassing schools with several towns, sending schools, sending students to it. Probably the only way that that first sentence can be changed is to add a second sentence to it. So that it says in the case, you know, something like in the case of more than, more than one town. This is not the right way to say it, but in the case of more than one town, the vote shall be aggregated. You know, something like that that just makes it very, very clear. But I'm assuming that the study committee's attorney is on the, on the call. And if she would like to talk with me about it when you take a break, I'd be, you know, happy to talk with her about whatever she would suggest to them.
Thank you, Donna. So does, I mean, do other board members feel like this is an area that could be clarified? And this is, I believe, on page seventeen of the merger study committee report and Articles of Agreement. So it would just be to clarify in paragraph one that the votes would be aggregated. And then also in paragraph two B, that the votes would be aggravated, aggregated. Is there any objection to making that recommendation? Is everyone in favor of making that recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do we need to do a formal vote on this? I guess that's a question for Donna.
I don't know if you do or don't, but it doesn't, it never hurts. But I don't, I don't see any reason that you need to.
Okay, well, just, just in case, I will move that we recommend to the ANWSD, MAUSD merger study committee that they amend on page seventeen of their report, paragraphs one and two B to clarify that in the case of any votes, that the votes shall be aggregated. Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
I think I saw Kim first. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Can I just, I just wanted to do one acknowledgement that the law, as most recently changed, Chapter eleven, requires aggregation of voting. So it would be required even if not a change. I think, as I understand it, and Donna can correct me, I think you could have only chosen differently if it were in your original articles that predated the law. So I think now it's required that votes be aggregated. But I may be wrong, and I think clarification makes sense regardless. So I'm not, I'm going to vote in support of this motion. And, and I just wanted to point that out, though. I think if for some reason there were not language that clarified this, I think the law requires it.
Okay.
And Donna, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I think that's a reasonable reading.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Are there any extensions? Hearing none, it appears that the motion is carried and you have approved it. Thank you. Are there any other recommendations the board members wish to present to the study committee? Right, hearing none. What I would then like to do is, absent objection, we can table this agenda item so that we stay on schedule and to give the merger study committee time to consider our comments and plan to return to this item at approximately eleven twenty. Yeah, I think that really kind of puts us right on schedule. So why don't we, for now, let's take a break. It's nine forty-five. Why don't we plan to return at ten o'clock? We'll go ahead and take a fifteen minute break. Oh, Miss Kelly, before we.
Yeah, I was just wondering if Donna Russo Savage could give us that statutory reference in case we wanted to include that in, say, in accordance with the statute. We want aggregated, you know, that it requires an aggregate vote.
Certainly, and is Dina on the call? Because if she is, I'll just text it to her.
She is not, but we're reaching out to her to ask her to join our, the committee's meeting.
Okay, why don't I text it to her and then you all can text me if you have any. She has my cellphone. You can text me if you have any, you know, want me any, any further.
Thank you. Great. So we'll table this agenda item. We'll return to it at eleven twenty. And in the meantime, we'll take a break. We'll return at ten o'clock. In the meantime, if you could turn off your, or shut your cameras and microphones. Okay, well, it's ten oh one. Why don't we get started? I think almost everybody is back. So at this point, we're going to move on to item J on our agenda, which is the Lincoln School District update. And this is really just meant to be kind of a recap of where we are and where we're going, just so that we're all on the same page. But I thought it would be helpful just to sort of briefly remind everyone, you know, sort of what has led us to where Lincoln is in their withdrawal process. So on May eighteenth, at the state board meeting, we reconstituted the Lincoln School District for pre-kindergarten through grade twelve, effective on July first, twenty twenty-three, and approved the request of the Lincoln voters to withdraw from the Mount Abraham Unified School District pursuant to the terms of sixteen VSA, Section seven twenty-four then in effect. As such, Lincoln is locked into an operational date of July first, twenty twenty-three. And the state board now needs to resolve regional supervisory union assignments in response to Lincoln's withdrawal from the Mount Abraham Unified School District. Donna, I'm going to stop here. I see your hand is raised. You're muted if you're speaking.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. You said that your motion was that you reconstituted the new school district effective July one, twenty twenty-three. Actually, the way you did it, it was effective on the day of your motion. And it's with the understanding that they would not be responsible for operations until July one, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so as you all know, the state board has broad discretion in the exercise of its authority with respect to supervisory union configurations, including creating and dissolving supervisory unions, assigning and reassigning school districts to existing supervisory unions, and declaring school districts to be supervisory districts. So at our May eighteenth meeting, we invited representatives of the Lincoln School Board to attend our regular September twenty twenty-two meeting to present their proposals regarding the provision of supervisory union services, including those services necessary to meet education quality standards and other state and federal laws and to answer state board questions. We also notified all interested parties of our intent to review supervisory union boundaries pursuant to sixteen VSA, Section two sixty-one A at our regular September twenty twenty-two meeting. Meanwhile, the Ripton School District has indicated to the state board that it wishes to proceed with its July first or with a July first, twenty twenty-three operational date and will be submitting its status report for consideration by no later than today. Per Act one seventy-six, the state board must issue a determination of preparedness based on the review of Ripton's status report in sufficient time for Ripton to consider options that will expire on September first, twenty twenty-two. Also, voters in Starkspur voted in May to withdraw from the Mount Abraham Unified School District. And voters in the remaining towns within the MAUSD will vote on August ninth, whether or not to ratify the withdrawal. There are many moving pieces as we sit here today, and it's really hard to predict the results of any town's withdrawal. Nevertheless, at our September twenty twenty-two meeting, we will need to determine the provision of supervisory union services to Lincoln and must decide whether to assign the school district to an existing multi-district supervisory union, create a new SU that includes the Lincoln School District or one or more other town school districts and/or union school districts, or designate the Lincoln School District as a supervisory district in order to provide its own supervisory services. In this regard, it would be helpful to know Lincoln's preferences. There has been some indication that they were interested in pursuing a supervisory union with Ripton and possibly other towns. But critically, it will be helpful to know what contingency plan they have if Ripton chooses to take the off-ramp from its withdrawal process and if Ripton returns to the Addison Central School District. Specifically, would Lincoln prefer to become its own supervisory district? Would it prefer to be assigned to another SU? And if so, which one? Has it been engaged in conversations with these SUs? Because the time to do that would be now. Would Lincoln request that the state board deconstruct a supervisory district into an SU? And if so, which one? And what level of conversations have been had in that regard? And if no supervisory union wants them and Ripton goes back to the ACSD, what would be their preference? It's important to note, too, the Chair Olson has also reached out to neighboring SUs for their feedback on what they would see as a viable option for Lincoln. for their feedback on what they would see as a viable option for Lincoln. And what I would suggest, and we can discuss this, is that Lincoln get back to the state board by September first with a detailed explanation of its preferences and contingency plans if, you know, depending on what happens with Ripton. September first, I really wanted to build in enough time because we don't know yet when our September board meeting is going to be. So September first allows Lincoln to get back to us and ample time for us to then to be able to consider it at our September board meeting. Does anyone have any comments, suggestions, feedback with regard to that? Tammy and Donna, your hand is up, I don't know if that's a new comment or if that's from before. But I'll start with Tammy.
Don't go anywhere, Donna, I have a question for you. I'm thinking about Lincoln in the context of the conversation we just had with the merger study committee, and I'm wondering if Donna could clarify for me slash us. What exactly sort of the implications if the study committee, as we now see that they intend to do, names Lincoln as an advisable district? In particular, what are the, what responsibilities would there be on the part of Lincoln's newly constituted board to respond or not, right, to having been named as an advisable district? And I'm asking that question in the context of all of these other moving pieces that we're, we're looking at with respect to Lincoln. So Donna, if you could help me out there, that would be appreciated.
I'd be happy to. Just remember that we're operating under the revised statutes in Chapter eleven, so it's a little hard to find them, but seven oh eight, Section seven oh eight governs this. Seven oh eight subsection B addresses advisable and necessary districts. Seven oh six B two says that it is up to the study committee to decide which districts it intends to name as advisable. If you read both section, if you read the entire section in its entirety, only a member of the study committee can be a necessary district, and so by that requirement, it means that an advisable district does not have to be a member of a study committee. So that's one thing, the study committee then has total authority to name it or not to name it pursuant to seven oh six B two. Then also in seven oh six B two, once it has been named this, a district that has been named as an advisable district, the school board has the authority to vote whether or not it wants to warn this question. If it chooses to warn the question, then the question goes before the voters in that advisable district and they vote. If it chooses not to warn the district, then the vote does not go forward, except if that school district's board is petitioned by ten percent of their own voters to go ahead and warn. So it's a higher percentage than actually most of the petitions for warning things are, most of them are five percent, and in this case, it's ten percent. Is that clear enough?
Thank you, that's really helpful. So is, if I'm understanding what you said, the merger study committee has, has the authority to name Lincoln as an advisable district, even though we have heard feedback from Lincoln saying they would prefer not to be named. So they have the authority to do that, independent of that. And so now, if we are to approve the study committee report and that moves forward, Lincoln now will have a choice as to whether they warn that voter or not. If they choose not to, the citizens of Lincoln still have another option that they might pursue, which is to petition with ten percent to actually warn that vote. Did I get sort of that logic tree right?
That is exactly...
Okay, that's really helpful to me. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Here, oh, Kim?
Um, so, I'm just, I'm gonna continue to make sure that I'm understanding this thread, understand the vote and how that would either happen or not happen, and the authority of the study committee to name who is advisable. If the vote were to come out in the affirmative as advisable, what are the next steps in that process and how is that interacting with the current status of Lincoln? And I'm guessing that's a Donna question, or...
Oh, I'll let Donna...
Yeah, I'm understanding your question. The next thing would be for the board of the Lincoln School District to vote whether or not it wishes to warn the, the vote, which will be occurring on election day in November, so it would have a couple of months to have that vote before it needed to, to warn it. And if it chose not to warn it, then the citizens of Lincoln would have the ability to, to try to get enough signatures to petition the school board to do so.
So Donna, I think actually my question was after that.
Sorry.
So if the vote happens and results in an affirmative that they be an advisable member of the A W, whatever, the new merged district, what are the next steps for a Lincoln in that case to becoming part of that unified district?
I see what you're saying. So you're saying if, if Lincoln does warn it and the voters in Lincoln say, yes, we would like to be part of the U U S D, then it would be the same as, it, it is a school district, it has a school board, it's the same as the M A U S D or the A and W S D, they are school districts with school boards. So all of, all of those people would get together with, with, you know, with whatever planning that they're going, and, and support they are going to provide to the newly elected school board members. That's something I probably should mention, is, is that one aspect of voting for any kind of a merger is that on the same day that people vote whether to merge or not, they also vote to elect a new school board. And so there would be, if, if the merger were approved, there would be a school board that has been elected and could be sworn in and get up and running at that point. And Lincoln would be the same in that, in that particular case.
Okay.
So, Donna, the vote is really, and there, there already are an advisable district because they have been so named by the merger study committee. So the vote would really be on whether they want to join the merged new school...
Correct. If they, if they choose to warn a vote as an advisable district, it would be whether or not they wish to join, exactly.
And at that point, the result of that vote is binding. There's no subsequent vote. Advisable just means the merger can go forward. If that advisable community votes negatively, the mergers can still go forward if the remaining towns vote in the affirmative. If the advisable community votes in the affirmative, they are, there is no subsequent vote, they are considered to be part of that unified district.
With the exception for the reconsideration vote, the thirty-day reconsideration period, other than that, you are absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't envy the communities for the need to fully understand what they're voting on and when. It is seeming to be multiple opportunities to be asked for opinions in that region, and I admire those trying to make clarity out of it for the voters, and I encourage you to stick with it because it is a little bit of a messy timeline, I'm sure, for those communities to fully understand what they're taking action on, and particularly some of it happening at times when people are otherwise occupied with other things. So thank you for the effort being put in in that regard, and good luck.
So I will follow up then with the representatives from Lincoln and just kind of memorialize this conversation, which, you know, substantively didn't add anything new to what we had already, you know, put out there in May, but just really kind of clarifies what we're looking for and adds in a September first deadline. All right. Now that takes us to item K, and I think we're slightly off schedule, but I think we'll make up some time here. So this is the Stowe-Lamoyle South Unified Union School District request to finalize the Stowe withdrawal pursuant to Section five of Act one seventy-six. So again, you've got a really good summary of the history of Stowe and its current petition to withdraw from the Lamoyle South Unified Union School District in your agenda packet. But, and I guess for the, for the record, I will sort of recap the history briefly. In December two thousand seventeen, the Elmore-Morristown Unified Union School District and the Stowe School District submitted a joint report to the Secretary of Education that evaluated their then-current governance structure and proposed an alternate government, yeah, alternate governance structure pursuant to Act forty-six, Section nine. However, in November two thousand eighteen, the state board's order issued pursuant to Act forty-six, Section ten declined to follow the Section nine proposal and instead merged the two districts to create the Lamoyle South Unified Union School District. The L S U U S D became fully operational on July first, two thousand nineteen. On May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, residing in Stowe voted to withdraw from the L S U U S D. Voters in Elmore and Morristown voted on November, on December seventh to ratify the withdrawal. However, because Stowe was force-merged into a unified union school district, the Agency of Education defined that the plain language of the withdrawal provisions of sixteen VSA Section seven twenty-four then in effect did not extend to a member of a state board-created U U S D who wanted to pursue withdrawal. The agency's position was echoed in a letter sent by the Chief Assistant Attorney General, Sarah London, who wrote that the state board probably lacked authority to apply the withdrawal process set forth in the version of sixteen VSA Section seven twenty-four then in effect to a unified union school district that was formed involuntarily pursuant to Acts forty-six and forty-nine. Thankfully, the General Assembly worked hard this spring to update the provisions of Section seven twenty-four and passed Act one seventy-six this spring. Specifically, Section two of Act one seventy-six repealed the former Section seven twenty-four, Section three enacted new language for Section seven twenty-four, and Section five explicitly addressed the applicability of the former Section seven twenty-four to state board-created unified union school districts such as the L L U, L S U U S D. The governor signed Act one seventy-six into law on June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and it went into effect on that date. The withdrawal can, the withdrawal initiated by the May eleventh, two thousand one, I'm so sorry, the withdrawal initiated by the May eleventh, two thousand eleven vote in Stowe meets each of the stated conditions in Section five, and we now have clear authority to consider its petition. So, under Section five subdivision five B one, the self-selected representatives of Stowe and the board of the L S U U S D have submitted a written report explaining the ways in which their current plan for operation after Stowe's withdrawal from the L S U U S D conforms to or differs from their Section nine proposal that they submitted in December two thousand seventeen. This has been included in the agenda packet, and they've indicated that there is no change from their Section nine proposal. Next, under Section five subdivision five D two, the self-selected representatives of Stowe and the board of the L S U U S D must provide a written plan, including a timeline, identifying key actions they have taken and will take to transition to the proposed structure, and to ensure that as of their identified operational date, the proposed new school district will be prepared to assume sole responsibility for the education of its students and pre-kindergarten through grade twelve in a manner that will meet education quality standards as required by sixteen VSA Section one seventy-five, including the actions necessary to transition to the proposed method by which supervisory union services would be provided. This information has also been included in your agenda packet. Thus, the matter is now ripe for the state board to consider the report and plan and to provide the self-selected representatives and the L S U U S D board an opportunity to be heard, and of course, it is within our discretion to take testimony from other individuals and entities to help us in that regard. Before turning things over to Stowe's self-selected representatives and the board of the L S U U S D, I want to remind board members that at the conclusion of the presentation and an opportunity for questions by members of the state board, we have four potential motions that we will be voting on, all of which have been included in your agenda packet. These motions pertain to a determination of preparedness, a motion approving withdrawal and creating a new school district, a potential motion regarding the continuation of the L S U U S D following Stowe's withdrawal, and a potential motion determining the manner in which supervisory union services, including the provision of special education services, will be provided. So, without further ado, I will turn it over to Stowe and the L S U U S D.
Hi, everyone, good morning. Just want to make sure, can everybody hear me okay?
Good morning.
My name is Ryan Herdy, and I'm the superintendent for Lamoyle South Unified Union School District. I've been designated as a spokesperson today to discuss a withdrawal request. First, I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here today and for the board's willingness to put our request on the agenda so quickly. I would also like to thank all of you for your work to support the students of Vermont. We're a small state, and we know by working together, we can accomplish great things for our students. Over the past few years, L S U U has been navigating many conversations around governance structure. Our goal today is to present a plan that will hopefully move our district forward and shift our focus more towards where we would like to be putting our energy, which is on teaching and learning. We have a streamlined presentation for the board that we hope is an efficient use of everyone's time. So I have a presentation that I will share with you. Go ahead and, and ask any questions that you would like to ask along the way. We also have our two self-selected representatives present on this call, along with three of our board members that can also answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks.
Okay, so just a brief overview, and I know that you already have a lot of this information, so I'll try to go over this fairly quickly, and I also know you have a lot on your plate today. So the Lamoyle South Unified Union School District, along with the self-selected representatives, are jointly presenting a plan and timeline to request that Stowe is allowed to withdraw from the current district and create an independent school district. The end goal of this work is to reestablish the supervisory union structure that was in place prior to the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. The SU operated with two independent school districts benefiting from shared services across three towns, Elmore, Morristown, and Stowe. So I will, I will save the majority of this introduction because you've already done a great job summarizing the history here. I just wanted to highlight one thing on here, is that we view this as a positive and collaborative process between our school board and our self-selected representatives, and we think that this, that the goal can be accomplished and not have any negative impact on students, but also move us forward in, in a lot of ways, and we also feel strongly that all of the positives that have been gained from our merger can be retained into the supervisory union structure. So the proposed governance structure that is being presented is the same as the alternative governance structure presented to the state board in two thousand eighteen, two side-by-side independent school districts sharing supervisory union services. Also, this will allow for capital improvement needs to be addressed by town. This is one of the, the main reasons why our return back to a supervisory union is so critical. We have significant capital improvement needs in Stowe, and those needs are not equally shared in Morristown and Elmore, and so we would like to address those capital improvement needs potentially with a bond over the next few years. This also provides for more local control and acknowledges the deep traditions of each high school in our district, and also recognizes the will of the electorate. I think L S U U is a, is a unique school district because of our geography and our current enrollments, so our current enrollments support our schools as they are, and our geography also doesn't support any efficiencies that would be gained by merging schools or transporting students across town, other than for athletics and other programs, which we are currently doing and which we will continue to do. So the proposed governance structure is the supervisory union services would be provided over Stowe School District, and the Lamoyle South Unified Union School District would be comprised of Elmore and Morristown, and Stowe would form its own school district. Enrollment oversight, so we have seven schools. L S U U would oversee Elmore, Morristown, People's Academy Middle Level and People's Academy, and Stowe School District would oversee Stowe Elementary, Stowe Middle, and Stowe High. The supervisory union would oversee our public and partner preschool programs, also provide special education services and business services to the district. So the plan and timeline, so in June two thousand twenty-two, our L S U U board reps or three board reps and the self-selected representatives prepared this plan and timeline for, for the state board review and approval. Board review and approval. We held a special meeting with the LSUU Board to present this plan and gain approval. We had full approval from our current Board that was held at Morristown Elementary. We also held an informational meeting for the public on June 28th at Stowe Elementary So now we're into July, and so we submitted our materials as requested in Section 5 we also are presenting today. We're hopeful that the State Board will approve the Stowe withdrawal to create the Stowtown School District and also create the supervisory union structure. We held LSUU Board Retreat last week. At that retreat, we talked about all of the efficiencies that were gained through the reorganization and the ways that we can maintain those efficiencies, and also our, our sense of collaboration that is currently in place right now. Our current school board is operating in a great way, and we would like to continue with that process. So, assuming and hoping that the Stowe withdrawal would be approved, I would notify the Secretary of State around the election calendar and move forward with the election of the Stowe School District Board of Directors. So in August and October, the certification of the new district would hopefully take place, and governance structure would be received from the state of Vermont. The LSUU School Board would finalize recommendations for the amended LSUU Articles of Agreement. So the current Articles of Agreement would be amended to reflect that LSUU would be comprised of Elmore and Morristown. Also, there would be some potential changes around the number of Board members. Currently, there are seven Board members, and so there would be a discussion about either keeping seven Board members or reducing it down to five Board members. Public informational meetings would be held on these recommended amendments, and then an election would be warned. The election would be held for three new Board members for the Stowe School District on November 8th. That's, that's probably the only one on here that I had a question about based on Donna Russo-Savage's memo that she had sent, which had outlined a special election, so that is one that should probably be discussed. The next on there is Morristown and Elmore will vote to approve the amended Articles of Agreement that will be in place starting on July 1st, including a reduction of Board seats from seven to five potentially, based on the discussion of the Board. An organizational meeting would be held by the new Stowe School District Board of Directors to elect a Chair, establish a calendar for future meetings, and conduct initial business. This is earmarked for November 15th, but would also be dependent upon the need for a special election. December through January, the newly-elected existing Boards would meet to facilitate the following, negotiate the proposed financial terms of withdrawal by the Board of the new school district and the Board of the union school district in order to comply with the requirements of the former 16 VSA Section 724, also appointment of the reps that will serve on the Lemoyle South Supervisory Union Board, conduct any other business to ensure the preparation, proper operation of the two independent school districts starting on July 1st, 2023, prepare an FY24 budget for Stowe School District and Lemoyle South Unified Union School District, also the negotiation of employee bargaining contracts for Stowe School District in accordance with H727, and other tasks as identified to ensure the new supervisory union and member districts will be prepared for operations on July 1st. February and March, public informational meetings would be held on proposed school budgets and financial terms of withdrawal and reorganization. There would be a town meeting day vote on the budgets. There'd be an election potentially of one new LSUU Board member. Currently, there are three members from Morristown and one member from Elmore, and so the question would be how that would be balanced out for the new LSUU Board. And then a vote to approve financial terms for withdrawal would also occur on Town Meeting Day. April through June, the Boards would meet to conduct any business necessary to ensure the preparation of the districts and supervisory union. Transfer of property would occur to the new forming districts, and LSUU would remain open after July 1st to address audits and outstanding miscellaneous issues until December 31st, 2023. So that's, that's the presentation that I had for the State Board. Again, tried to make it as streamlined and efficient as possible, and now hope to answer any questions that you may have.
Would it be helpful to turn it first to Donna with regard to the special election on November 8th?
Sure. There's no requirement that there be a special election before November 8th. Their proposal to elect, wait until November 8th to elect the Board members is certainly a legal thing to do. My concern was is that the Board members have an awful lot of responsibilities that they can't even begin to do until they're elected. And for, for the, you know, perhaps the negotiating the financial terms of agreement, perhaps that's not going to be a problem, but the, the new school board will need to prepare its proposed budget prior to Town Meeting Day. And if, and if everyone thinks that there's plenty of time for them to do so, if they're not even elected until November 8th, then, you know, that's fine. My, my concern was just that they have plenty of time to, to do the things they need to do.
Kim?
So, just in acknowledging Donna's thoughts, I would share that concern, and I'm just wondering if the folks in Stowe and Morrisville and Elmore have considered that in their timeline?
Yeah, so I can, I can comment on that, that I think the self-selected representatives and the current Board members would be fine with either option. I think they would be okay with a special election or with a November 8th election. I think it's just a matter of what would be recommended by the State Board and by the Secretary of State.
Dan?
Yeah, just to add to the consideration on the slide, it talked about a Stowe School District budget process and a Lemoyle Unified Union School District budget process, but it didn't list an SU budget process, and I think that's going to be the other piece of the puzzle is resurrecting that. I mean, if everyone's working together, and this shouldn't be too much trouble, but you have to resurrect a system of assessments for those SU costs, and that's, will take some time, particularly as the special ed budgets are coming together concurrently with this timeline. Any other piece, you mentioned collective bargaining. I'd assume you'd have to resurrect the idea of a supervisory union bargaining council to engage in that conversation, so that's another piece of work just to put on your radar.
Kim?
On that last point, Dan and Donna, I guess, I'm trying to remember what the default situation is with respect to, or if there is such a thing, with respect to contract negotiations, and, and certainly the more I heard Dan list, the more I am leaning in the direction of strongly recommending an earlier vote than November. But is there a default position for either merger or withdrawal negotiation in contracts?
So there is for, there is already for merger, there has been for many years. There, there is a new one for withdrawal, and that is what in the slides was referenced as Section 11. It's actually a statutory section, but the statutes haven't been updated yet. And my memory at a very high level is that because there will not be any employees of the Stowe School District yet, there was no way to form a teachers' negotiations council, so the statute says that the UUSD negotiations council acts on their behalf and negotiates with the school board, the Stowe School Board. And if they are unable to reach an agreement by a certain date, and I don't recall what date that was, then the most recently, the terms of the most recently bargained contract for the UUSD apply for the first year in Stowe.
I would, I would also add that we just negotiated a three-year contract that just started, and so in discussions with our union president, they were very much in support of trying to keep that contract in place as much as possible moving forward. So I'm hopeful that a side letter can be arranged that would allow that to take place with the new Stowe School District Board of Directors.
So I just, in the interest of clarity, want to confirm two things. One is that the LSUUSD wishes to continue despite the withdrawal of Stowe? And everyone is in agreement on that?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second is that it is your request that a supervisory union be created today to sort of oversee what will then become the Stowe School District and the LSUUSD, which will just be Elmore and Morristown. Is that also correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
So that, that would be similar, exactly what was in place prior to the merger, and, but it would have to be a new supervisory union according to Donna, so that would be, that's our request.
Okay. And again, everyone is in agreement on that? Like, this is ripe for us to make a decision today?
Correct. Yep, our, our Board fully supported this, and, you know, we view it as something that is, is pretty straightforward.
Any other questions, comments from Board members? And then Patrick?
Sure, Jennifer, you can just tell me, that's a topic for another day, but I guess I'm struggling. It sounds like the process is in place and this can all happen. I guess I'm questioning, still questioning why. You have come together, and I've heard you say that there have been positive steps taken programmatically, and you're working together very well, and everything is working as you'd like it to. I guess my questions are, how will this change? And again, if this is a question for another day, Jennifer just stopped me. How will, how will this change increased efficiencies financially? How will quality of education continue to move forward in a positive way? Will there be equity in services continuing as I assume they are now throughout all of the schools? Can you do the upgrades in Stowe without this process happening? I guess I'm questioning why. And maybe I lost it in the translation in the very beginning, and tell me to go back to another document, Lyle, and read this other document.
Yeah, I think those are very good questions, and I think they're all appropriate.
Yeah, I can, I can do my best to answer, answer your questions. I guess, I guess since, since the merger took place and that the district began operating in 2019-20, it's been a pretty contentious issue, and I think the electorate felt that the supervisory union and the way that it had operated at the time operated in a very efficient way. The students were doing very well academically, the budgets were very efficient, and they felt, you know, they asked the question, why was this changing? And so since that merger took place, we haven't really been able to get over that. And so there's always been this underlying current of, you know, why did this take place? And why are we, you know, a unified district, and what are we gaining from this? And so I think really the will of the electorate is probably the primary factor, and also the local control and the ability to be more involved with local budgeting is something that our Boards would like to see, and I think, you know, overall, it's, it's what's best for our district to move forward and, you know, get our focus back on teaching and learning as opposed to constantly, you know, reflecting on this, on this governance structure.
Does that answer your questions, Lyle?
It's an uncontested divorce, is what I'm hearing.
I think, you know, the biggest, I, I would add, the biggest thing that makes sense for me is the capital improvement piece, because we have three towns, and if I just, you know, if I just referenced People's Academy and Stowe High School. Stowe High School has probably, you know, over $30 million of renovations that needs to take place to bring it up to where it needs to be. People's Academy does not need anywhere close to that. And so when we start talking about passing a bond, the way that our structure is right now, Elmore, Morristown, and Stowe would all have to vote for that bond. Elmore, Morristown, and Stowe would also have to take on the tax burden of that bond to improve the schools. And so for us as a district to move forward with capital improvements, it, it would be much more likely if we're voting by town for those capital improvements as opposed to doing it as a Unified Union School District. So I think that's probably the biggest argument that, that makes sense to me for, for Stowe's withdrawal.
Will staff need to be added?
So we're, we're unique in the sense that our enrollments are steady, our, you know, our students are not merged across the district, and really, it's just about breaking apart what we currently have in place right now, and it won't require us to add any staff. We have some staff that are shared across the district, and those staff will continue to be shared across the district. We just hired a new French teacher that's going to be providing language services to Stowe Middle School and People's Academy Middle Level, and that will continue. So we feel like we'll be able to do everything that we're currently doing, but get over the, get over the hump of the, of the conversation around governance structure.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Thank you. Mr. Jefferson answered, asked the question that I was going to ask, which is human resources, staffing. But my other question is, given the national climate, in this process, have you taken time to evaluate and review safety issues in the process?
That's, that's a great question. So we actually completed a safety audit this year with the State Safety Liaison, Rob Evans, and we're moving forward with an additional audit from Visbit and Mark Moody, and so we're doing another safety audit that's going to be taking place this summer. We also used some of our ESER funding to revise all of our crisis management plans and our emergency procedures district-wide, and that's taking place within the next six months. So I would say safety is probably one of the biggest focus areas for us right now as a district, and I, I feel strongly that the reverting back to, to, to separate school districts, if anything, will increase the focus on attention that is paid to those individual schools.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I think Tammy, you have some reading to do. Some motions queued up here.
I do, I do. There were four motions for the Board to consider, and I think Jennifer laid out sort of the sequencing of those. So I'm going to start with the first one, and if you want to follow along there in your board package as well. So for the first motion, we need to address the issue of preparedness, and with that, I move that pursuant to subdivision 5, subsection C, subsection 2, Act 176 of 2022. And upon consideration of both the written report and plan, and also the oral testimony of the self-selected representatives of Stowe and the Board of the Lemoyle South Unified Union School District, the State Board of Education determines that, one, it is likely that the proposed new Stowe School District will be prepared to assume full responsibility for the education of resident students in a manner that is substantially, that substantially complies with educational quality standards as required by 16 VSA Section 165 on the proposed operational date of July 1st, 2023. B, it is likely that the supervisory union services will be available to both the proposed new Stowe School District and the Lemoyle South Unified Union School District on the proposed operational date of July 1st, 2023. So that would be the first motion for consideration.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Kim Gleason. Is there any discussion? And Patrick, your hand is up. I don't know if that's a new... Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented by Tammy Colby, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Any dissension? Please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none. It appears that you have... Okay, hearing none. It appears that you have approved the motion and you have moved that you've moved that it
The board has determined.
Thank you.
That they are prepared.
Correct. All right, moving on to the next motion.
Okay, second motion has to do with is focused on approving or disapproving the withdrawal, the creation of a new district, and taking away and take any other necessary actions. Okay? So I move that, one, pursuant to 16 VSA Section 724, as it existed when the self-selected representatives of Stowe initiated withdrawal action, formerly seven, section 724. The State Board of Education finds that the recon that if it reconstitutes Stowe School District for pre-kindergarten through grade 12 effective July 1, 2023, the students living in Stowe will attend a school that is in compliance with the rules adopted by the State Board pertaining to educational programs in the 2023-2024 academic year, including rules related to education quality standards and to other state and federal law. Two, pursuant to the former section 724 into subsection five, subsection C of Act 176 of 2022. And upon consideration of both the report and plan, and also the oral testimony of the self-selected representatives of Stowe and the Board of the Lemoil South Unified Union School District submitted pursuant to subsection five B of Act 176, the State Board of Education does the following. A, approves the request of the Stowe voters to withdraw from the Lemoil South Unified Union School District, LSUUSD. B, declares that the withdrawal of Stowe from the LSUUSD shall be fully effective July 1, 2023. C, declares that the Stowe School District is hereby reconstituted as a pre-kindergarten through grade 12 school district. Two, that the schools, Stowe School District shall assume sole responsibility for the education of his resident students in pre-kindergarten through grade 12 on July 1, 2023. And that until such time, the LSUUSD shall continue to be responsible for the education of all students residing in Stowe. Part three, that between July 20, 2022 and July 1, 2023, the Stowe School District shall exist exclusively for the purpose of taking all steps necessary for the district to assume sole responsibility for the education of Stowe students in a manner that meets education quality standards and all other state and federal laws on July 1, 2023, including the following. A, election of school board members. The Secretary of State calls a special election at which the Stowe School District voters elect school board members pursuant to 16 VSA Section 424C. B, negotiation of financial agreement. The Stowe School Board and the LSUUSD Board negotiate and finalize the proposed financial details of withdrawal pursuant to the former section 724C. C, approval of financial agreement. The voters residing in each non-withdrawing town within the LSUUSD vote to approve the negotiated financial arrangements pursuant to the former section 724C. D, budget for fiscal year 2024. The Stowe School Board prepares a proposed fiscal year 2024 budget for the district's first year of operations, and the voters of the district approve a budget for that year. And finally, E, other transitional activities. The Stowe School Board takes all other actions necessary to transition to full operations on July 1, 2023, including any actions pursuant to 16 VSA Section 1804 or otherwise that are necessary to address the collectively bargained rights of employees of the LSUSS, LSUUSD, the former employee entity. That concludes the motion.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Kim Gleason. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay, it appears that you have approved the motion and the motion has been approved. All right, moving on to our third motion.
Okay, so the third motion deals with the consideration of whether or not to continue the LSUUSD following Stowe's withdrawal. Okay, so I move that pursuant to 16 VSA Section 724C, as it existed when the self-selected representatives of Stowe initiated the withdrawal action and Act 176, Section 5 of 2022. A, the State Board of Education finds that it is in the best interest of the state, the students in the school districts remaining in the Unified Union School District, that the Lemoil South Unified Union School District continue to exist. And B, the State Board of Education declares that the Lemoil South Unified Union School District shall continue to exist despite the withdrawal of Stowe as a member. That concludes the motion.
Heard the motion. Is there a second? Kim Gleason? Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay, it appears that the motion has carried and you have approved it. Thank you. And finally, the fourth motion.
The fourth motion deals with the issue of the manner in which supervisory union services, including the provision of special education services, will be provided to the newly created Stowe School District and LUUSD as it's now reconstituted. With that in mind, I move, one, that pursuant to 16 VSA Section 261, the State Board of Education hereby creating new supervisory union, the Lemoil South Supervisory Union, to be an administrative, planning, and educational service unit pursuant to 16 VSA Section 11, with the Lemoil South Unified Union School District consisting of Elmore and Morristown and the Stowe Schools District as member districts to be fully operational on July 1, 2023. Two, that between July 20, 2022 and July 1, 2023, the supervisory union and its board members, once legally appointed, shall exist for the purpose of preparing for the full date of operations. And three, that on July 1, 2023, the Lemoil South Unified Union School District shall cease to be a supervisory district. That is, it will cease to provide its own supervisory union services. That concludes the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Okay, Kim Gleason has seconded. I will just make a friendly amendment. When you were reading paragraph two of the motion, Tammy, I think you meant to say preparing for the date of full operations. The full was a little bit out of place, but I just we're all reading it. I just wanted to point out for the record that it should be, shall, for the purpose of preparing for the date of full operations.
Thank you for catching that. A lot of words.
Yeah, I hope you have water nearby. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay, it appears that you have adopted the motion and the motion has been approved. Excellent. Thank you all. And to the members of Lemoil South and to Stowe, we wish you the best of luck going forward. And hopefully, this will bring you some closure so that you can put this behind you and move forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so this brings us to item L, which is a diversity presentation by Adam Bunting, who is from the Champlain Valley Union High School. So Patrick, oh, I see, Kim, that your hand is was.
I, yeah, I was just gonna say, I didn't want to have it as discussion in our vote. It didn't want to confuse the matter, but I'm just noting that the Stowe separation and SU structure that we just voted to approve is, it seems to make most sense in those communities where they're operating pre-K-12 regardless. And I think there's something to be understood about the the merger discussion earlier in Addison County area where they are considering their merger and unification to create additional opportunities by looking at how they will operate pre-K-12 across those two merged districts. So I just am pointing to that difference because they were, they were clear in asking that the preferred structure of an SD be what we and their communities approve in their process. And I wanted to just acknowledge from my thinking that that is not inconsistent with what we just voted on. Those are two really different structures and and community sets around the way they operate. And I I just, I kind of wanted to acknowledge that as not an inconsistency for me and my thinking or my vote. And I imagine as we heard those discussions that it was just probably worth pointing out. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Lyle?
And I just want to say, maybe similar to what Kim just said, but slightly different. I voted yes for all those. Because to me, on the face of it, it appears that it's not working for the adults. And so in order to make it work for the kids, it's got to work for the adults in the district. I can't help but think, and this is me just getting up on my soapbox, we are so small. I can't help but think that merging and working together can't be a benefit to the students. So I hope that they will continue to work together, and it sounds like they're gonna do that. And so that's why I voted yes.
Thank you. Any other final thoughts? With that, Patrick, I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to give us an introduction before we hear.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Chair Sam Wilson. Good morning, Mr. Bunting. Thank you for taking time off out of your busy, busy schedule to be with us this morning. And that being said, it is my pleasure to present you to the Board of, the State Board of Education to do a brief overview of all the wonderful things that has been happening at CVU. So welcome and look forward to your presentation.
Thanks so much for having me. And I just want to apologize to Dr. Brown for how long it took to get this together. I know this has been in the works for some time. I'd also like to commend all of you. Somehow you got through all of that with an incredible punctuality. And Tammy, that was some some impressive readings. If anyone needs to take a beat for a minute or a breath, just just interrupt me. Everyone good? All right. I'll also give you a warning that I am a Zoom and Google Meets guy, so I have not shared via Teams. I'm gonna give it a shot right now because I have a presentation here. And as I'm figuring that out, let's see. Is the, can you all see my screen?
I can't see it.
You can't? Okay, try that again. Seeing, seeing it's not being able to access my camera. So I need to fix that setting. How about now?
Yes.
So it should be a wake of a boat?
Yes.
All right, great. Whew, a little nervous there for a second. All right, so so Dr. Brown reached out to me some some time ago and asked me to detail or just talk a little bit about CVU's journey around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And by the way, just before I get into that, I want to talk about, I'm so excited to see that Cornel West is coming. When I think about my own journey around around diversity and equity, reading Savage Inequalities when I was nineteen had a huge impact on my choice to come into education. So really excited to hear that that he's he's coming. But, you know, I think as we, as we know, journeys around equity and diversity and inclusion don't necessarily have a beginning and an end. I think maybe there are some mile markers along the way. There are certainly some divergent roads, as I've discovered in heading into my eighth year of principal at CVU. And I was principal at Montpelier for three years prior to that. So I I figured that I would take take some time just to really detail what's happened over the past five years, knowing that the journey started long before I got here, and the journey is going to continue long after, long after this year. And I think, like, I was a former English teacher, so I wanted to put a title on on this journey. And, you know, I was struggling a little bit with thinking about how to how to entitle this presentation. And then I flashed back to, we we actually just concluded an equity audit this year with a group called Mass Insight. And one of the questions that they asked me when we were talking was, to whom are you accountable? And I I kind of chuckled thinking about what it means to be a high school principal, where I I sort of feel like I'm accountable to everybody. But it did get me thinking about the difference between accountability and responsibility. And Val Gardner, who's a mentor of mine, was principal at CVU. It's amazing. I'm sure many of you know Val. Often we talk about the difference between accountability and the idea that accountability is a bit external pressure to do the right thing versus the idea of responsibility, which is an internal willingness and an internal drive to to do what's right by right by the community. And that really made me think about the past five years at CVU. If I were to label our our journey, and maybe this is partly aspirational, but I believe we're moving from a place of accountability to a place of responsibility around ensuring that CVU welcomes diverse perspectives, that equity is a foremost lens for us, that we're as inclusive a community as possible. So I think with that, and the other really important question, and the other, you know, maybe more important than what our what our intent is, is how do our systems and structures empower a more equitable experience for all of our students within our community and then beyond? I go back to 2017. This is a peak at our core values. These have lived at CVU for some time. These three are just a representation of eleven other core values. And and we were very proud of these core values. So the idea that when we're hiring people, we're thinking, do they do they hold these values as we're hiring? So we want someone who sees our learners, that that all learners have a strength and a genius and a story that our job as educators is to accept responsibility, uncover and grow those strengths in collaboration with our learners, respecting autonomy, voice, and agency. We also believe that how a learner is, how a learner is seen is often how they see themselves. And a reminder that we hold high expectations for everybody in our community. And then I think really, if I were to highlight some of the most important values at CVU, it's the idea of authentic relationships. That those authentic relationships, that they allow honesty, they foster belonging and equity, they drive purposeful learning. And that's certainly a very, again, I go back to Val Gardner, who, when I was in high school here, you know, she went by her first name. It wasn't, you know, she was Val. She was a It wasn't, uh, you know, she was Val. She, she was uh, amazing. And, and then just the idea that we wanna learn our, our learners holistically. So these, these values, I think, help set a stage for us. Uh, they've been around for a long time. Um, and you know, we, we had some practices too in twenty seventeen where we were really trying to get to know all of our students. So we started using, we have some homegrown software here. Uh, we have a non-anonymous survey that we give out three times a year to all of our students, just trying to see what their connection is. We call it the Engage Survey. Um, and we wanted to see, you know, what a student's experiences in school. And we, we looked at the forty developmental assets and built uh, this, these surveys and this, the software tool to really measure. So you know, if you look at the top line here, this is a heat map, so the darker the color, the, the more uh, intensity of, of response and the like are at response. So you'll see that four hundred and forty-four students agreed in that top line that they had um, uh, an adult that they could talk to, that they could feel connection with. Four hundred and eighteen strongly agreed with that. And then you, you go to the left, eight students strongly disagreed with that statement. Eight students also said they didn't have, they weren't experiencing friends at school. And uh, the problem with anonymous surveys is you, you can't, you can't connect with those students. But in this one, uh, we knew who said it and uh, so we would go and connect with them. So we had some practices that we were proud of in, in terms of trying to uplift and hear the voices of all the students at C V U. But we also had some, some glaring holes. Uh, and our students in twenty seventeen really noticed that. I think they were, they were the ones to, to first hold us accountable. You, this uh, new value that's here is much more intentional. Uh, this was written in, in twenty nineteen after working with our students uh, about the idea of intentionally being anti-racist and anti-biased in our policies, really making the professional space to, to look at our own, our, our own biases that we may not be aware of. You know, and, and for me, uh, as I think about this journey, particularly as we, we moved our diversity, equity and inclusion lens to to look more closely at race, I, I can look at the numbers in, in the heat survey and the heat map. I can look at our proficiency data. Nothing is more powerful than uh, when a student tells you a story. And it was in about twenty seventeen that one of our really strong student leaders sat with me in my office. Uh, and we actually were having a discussion about um, I think it was a mentoring program that she was in and I was just kind of listening. And she very offhandedly shared with me what it felt like to grow up in our community and what, and when she was in sixth grade. You know, she told me, she's like, yeah, I just, I didn't like my dark skin. I didn't, I didn't like that part of me. I, I looked around at my peers who were very light appearing and I just wanted to be lighter skinned like them. And so I filled up a, a bathtub with water and I put some bleach in it and I took a bath trying to, and then she moved on with the conversation. And for me, that was uh, just a pivotal moment in terms of like, just pausing and I was like, wait, can you share that with me again? Because the, the way in which she shared it was all, was just, it'd be, it'd been so normalized for her. And, and hearing that student voice was, was an awakening for me um, in a different way. And um, I think also spoke to, to what some of our students were experiencing. Um, and that is not feeling like they belong, feeling um, you know, feeling like they weren't included uh, as part of the community. And so it was uh, again, it was a group of students who said, no, we need to, we need to change the intentionality that our school leadership has uh, around, around our community, around being more inclusive, changing uh, our focus on diversity and equity and being, uh, and again, I'll just go back to the word intentional, particularly uh, around what it feels like. Uh, if, if uh, you're a part of a group that, you know, to use a state term, that's, that would be historically marginalized. So um, they uh, our, our student leadership group, our racial alliance committee got together. They, they formed a coalition, met with folks like Senator Rahm, somehow got Cory Booker to send a video message to the school as well. I'm still not sure how they did that. And held a rally at school. Uh, this is Kristel Tanoki speaking in front of our entire student body with our racial alliance uh, group be- behind her. I took this photo with my phone and it was most of our student body coming together to issue their, their support. And in some ways, their dissatisfaction with the ways in which um, uh, we've been, been addressing particularly racial equity at our school. And so I go back to twenty seventeen again, is that really powerful mile marker for me, for where our equity journey began to change a bit. So since twenty seventeen, uh, this is a picture of Benny and Sunny on the left here. Our, our staff has, has embarked in some, some professional learning, you know, reading books uh, like White Fragility, How to Be An Anti-Racist, having professional learning groups around that. Our librarians have really pushed uh, some of that work, hosting groups uh, ongoing for the past five years. Uh, the C C H review is our curriculum clearinghouse, so we just finished uh, an audit of all of our departments, particularly looking at equity within, I, I run the English department, so for example, looking at the literature that we're exposing students to. Several groups came out of this time period too. Seeds is our first BIPOC affinity group. Sunny on the right started that several years ago. Our racial alliance group, our social justice uh, action team, our action curriculum and training group. So that's focused on issues around gender inequality. Our G S A group's incredibly powerful here. We've uh, have two uh, D E I coordinators in the building now, um, one of whom uh, who is, uh, sits on our leadership team of ten people in the building. This past year, uh, we added our, our store of justice coordinator, vaded courses, things like Black America, Social Justice Think Tank, our Human Impact Project, which all of our ninth graders do. Um, I'm particularly proud of some of the hiring and the way the hiring has changed. So um, again, the numbers are still way too low, but uh, BIPOC Administration Faculty and Staff was less than one percent uh, in twenty seventeen and now we're at uh, uh, four percent. Created a group called Partnership for Meaningful Inclusion. So I think, and again, the, I think what happens when, when inequity journeys is when you start recognizing uh, and trying to pay attention to the needs of one group that might feel marginalized, your eyes are, are more open to the whole. Um, so for students with special needs, intensive special needs in particular, we've, we've created a community group around that. Last year, we launched a program called C Three. So that's called Clubs Connecting Community Time. That happens every single day. And it's about, I don't know, a hundred clubs that students can participate in. Uh, some clubs run every day like our G S A, which has between seventy and a hundred members um, every day, depending on the day. Uh, but it, the idea is that students find these little communities that we are supporting within the school day. So it becomes part of our offerings for students. It's not after school where it's voluntary. Our whole community is together during this time and finding uh, like interests and, and finding uh, groups with whom we connect. To me, there's nothing more important than students finding connection while they're here. So we're working on our advisory systems. Uh, and again, we're also working on our engaged teams. So that, that heat map that you saw earlier, uh, we've moved from P L C teams to what we call engaged teams. So I am with a group of eleven other educators. We all have advisories. Our job is to look at the students within our advisory and say, who's connected, who's not, why or why not? What can we do uh, to support those students? As a principal, when I think about the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, we have thirteen hundred students here, we have to have, our entire community needs to be a part of engaging them. And then finally, um, uh, we've had, and we're just finishing up an equity audit that came from our central office, working in Mass Insight. So we're excited about that. And then I think more significantly, not more significantly, but in addition, um, this again, came from students saying, hey, we want it. We need to know, we need to have our reporting systems be a little bit more intentional around bullying, harassment and hazing. Uh, we need you, leadership team, to be more transparent about that. So we um, have these, this take a stand campaign that was done in collaboration with students, but really driven by students. We have these posters around the building where kids can, with a Q R code, uh, report when, when they've had an incident. And then um, you know, we're sharing, uh, we're being transparent about the incidents that happen and then also uh, our response to those incidents. Uh, our uh, school board came up with an equity policy. I think this was two years ago. Uh, so again, when we talk about systems and structures around equity journeys, policy uh, i- is really powerful. You're a board and you understand that more than anybody. And then again, getting more intentional about our data. So um, as part of our Engage uh, software, we have a focus score. So we, we have a score uh, that we determine around students we might be, that we wanna focus on and build connection with. So we're getting more, we're, we're disaggregating that data in more intentional ways. Um, and that, that would be true for looking at our proficiency data. So again, here are some graphs looking at um, our economically disadvantaged students. And this is actually looking at uh, students who are high outliers in terms of their proficiency or the students that are doing really well. This to me is a, is a, it's a fairly complex graph, but when you dig into it, it's a, it's concerning um, based on the uh, lower incidences of students, uh, econo- economically disadvantaged students who are not achieving uh, proficiency in ways that are I guess economically advantaged students are. So. So and this, this data is all relatively new for us. We now have to figure out what to do with it. So as our, as our journey continues, um, one, it's gotta be with our students and uh, I, that collaboration and those relationships with the students, I, our students were right when they said, hey, why are we the ones leading this? Where, where is, you know, where are the adults in this? And um, uh, so continuing that collaboration, that's evolved since twenty seventeen. And then doing some of the simple things like we need to dig in, get better with our data. We need to look at our, some of our graduation requirements to, to make sure that we're uh, looking at those with an equity lens. And then we've got uh, this equity audit that's coming out, the information's coming out, so spending some time digesting that and being responsive to what we've learned. So with that, I promise it'll only be twenty minutes. I probably went way over, but I am going to get out of this presentation and then jump back into the meeting.
Well, thank you so much for um, coming and making that presentation. I'm curious, um, you now have four percent of um, faculty and staff who are, you know, BIPOC, I, I guess. How does that correlate to your student population, if you know?
Uh, yeah, so our student population is about eleven percent right now. So um, so it would be wonderful if we get to or exceed that. I am, I am proud to say that uh, we have a ten-person leadership team. The two, two members of the leadership team would identify as BIPOC, so I think that's, that's really powerful for our students and different for our students um, to, to see uh, see more diversity in leadership, which, which I think is important. Here, it's portion, important across the state and I'm, I, I'm sure it's no secret that, that hiring in Vermont's challenging at times and we've gotta be really more, again, I'll use the word intentional, intentional about ways we, we go out and recruit people.
Thanks. Board members, any comments, questions?
Uh, not a question, but a comment, just to um, thank you, Mr. Bunting, for taking the time off from your very, very busy schedule to present today. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Kim and then Gabrielle.
Thank you. I wanted to share appreciation as well and um, admiration uh, in, in my time in Essex Westford, really. You all and I think our neighbors are, are working hard to uh, create environments that are inclusive and inspiring for all students. And I think um, you guys have done a great job with that. We had the good fortune of having Sabina with us uh, for two years. And I had the good fortune of commuting with her when we used to be able to be together, so I would love listening to her experiences. And you talk about authentic connection and I know, at least through the lens of her experiences, I felt that to be genuine and really what she experienced there. So um, that intentionality seems to bear out for your students there and I, I really admire that. Thank you so much. And then maybe a question and um, I think the work is hard. And I think the first time we looked at data through an equity lens in Essex Westford, it was hard to even come up with those metrics. And I'm thinking about the work happening in pockets and I don't know if this is a Dan question or how, how we're sharing what we're learning as these practices are evolving in terms of sharing that across districts. I don't, I don't know if either Adam or Dan might be able to speak to that.
I can, I can just speak to it quickly. Uh, you know, one of the, I think one of the powerful things that happened through COVID was we were forced to collaborate um, as principals in new ways. So I had a weekly meeting with what we, you know, what we call the Chittenden County Principals Association, which is a really loose term for, it's like, sounds fancy, but it's like a bunch of us getting together on a, on a Zoom meeting. Like, help, what are you doing? What am I doing? And um, just those, even those loose structures, I think, really have helped uh, because we're, we're just texting and calling each other now and saying, hey, what's, what's going on? And so those, again, I go back to that relationship piece. I think all, all of these advancements come from, from those connections, but.
Yeah, but just echo that, you know, C V U's done such great work under Adam. And uh, this has always been a perennial issue in Vermont, is how do we share things better? There's a lot of reinventing the wheel, but um, you know, back to Adam's point about shifting from accountability to responsibility. I, I do feel that the system is moving towards a broader sense of responsibility for these issues and that I think will no doubt lead to greater collaboration. But we, we have uh, I would say very close and collaborative relationships with the V P A leadership and a lot of their efforts. We have our own efforts in the agency, so um, again, I, I can feel uh, consensus and, and uh, common effort emerging on these topics in Vermont. So it's, it's great to uh, great to hear the good work. But we have, we have our work cut out for us in terms of sharing those things and scaling things. And that's, that's something we should be dedicated to trying to achieve.
Well, to Adam's point too, the whole um, I'm always looking for the silver lining with COVID. And I think sort of having these increased connections among Chittenden County and, you know, hopefully that will sort of trickle out to the rest of the state. That's a really good start. Gabrielle and then I think Lyle and then Tammy.
Unmuted?
Now you are, yeah.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate your direct action in trying to work with D E I, observing data and taking surveys, observing graduation requirements. It shows a really genuine interest and desire to make positive changes and benefit um, all students. And I also really appreciate the um, student involvement in all of this work. I really find it admirable that all these groups are being founded for good purposes and these kids are showing um, genuine interest in making positive changes and letting their voices be heard. I just, I think that's a really great thing and I would love to become more involved in that sort of area myself. And I hope that other schools follow, like your school and other schools that we've seen presenting here before in making D E I a bigger priority, especially among students, along with adults in like a collaborative effort. I think that's really great. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I really appreciate that. I do wanna be as transparent as possible because if my students saw me presenting this in any way as if I was the one that orchestrated all of this growth, I think I'd be uh, run out of school in the first day because I have to give the credit to their, their incredible leadership and, and collaborating, collaborating with them. I, and I'm inspired daily.
Thanks. Um, Lyle?
You are doing, Adam, is you're giving the students time to do those things. And way back in the day, I was a social studies teacher and there was nothing more important than social studies don't get in the way of that period class that I've got. And so you're carving out the time. So thank you for doing that because that's about respect.
Thanks. Um, Tammy?
Gosh, everybody said everything I wanted to say, other than I, and I'll just add my gratitude for the, for the work you're doing. And, and, and many thanks to you and everybody else who are the adults in the room for taking responsibility, but also giving the students a space to talk about this and take concrete action. I'm curious though to follow up on something Kim brought up and actually something we've been talking about. and actually something we've been talking about in the context of the EQS Subcommittee around data and trying to really think carefully about, in the context of quality standards, how we might integrate equity metrics into that conversation. And I'll be very curious to potentially follow up with you to learn a little bit more about the metrics that you're using. And I wrote down that you have a system, the Engage software. I certainly would be interested in learning more of that. And perhaps, I hope maybe we might be able to bring you back to our Subcommittee to talk more specifically about the data that you're collecting and how that's being used and how that might inform our other deliberations on the part of the board with regard to, you know, integrating data form decision-making around DEIJ into our educational quality standards. So again, thank you for all the work you do and your leadership on this issue. And I tapping you on the shoulder to let you know, I think we might try to bring you back to elaborate certainly on that piece for the context of the other work. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And I would, I would absolutely love to do that. An impressive recovery from all that reading, by the way. And yeah, I'm, I'm passionate particularly about the perception data that's non-anonymous because you really, it's a bit amazing how open students have been. And I compare that, the youth risk behavior survey is important. But when you actually ask a highly personal, powerful question to a student and you don't have the ability to follow up on it, I think that creates disconnection rather than connection. And I think all of this work is about creating connection. So.
To what extent do students, do you give the data back to your students, all this equity data, and ask them to interpret and, and help you understand what it is you're seeing?
Well, quite a bit. I mean, every advisor meets with their students about their responses. And we, we hold those responses private between the advisor and the student. And there have been times where parents have requested, hey, what is my kid saying? And I'm like, I don't know that I could really not tell you, but I'm not going to tell you. And just because it's important to have that confidentiality there. So we follow up on it that way. And we allow, I have like a principal's advisory committee that looks through the group, looks through, not the group, looks through the data. And, and then, and then we try to inform change based on it as best we can. We have to dial in those systems better this year. So like, I think like many schools, we will, we'll get the data. We'll follow up where it's really important with individuals. And then, you know, we get distracted in the, particularly through COVID and say, okay, what changes? How do we, how are we systemic about informing our action plan with this data? So that's, that's more, but I would love to talk more about it. And just a shout out to a guy, Brian Lloyd Newberry from dealer.com, who just, just through relationships again, was willing to build this system for us. So he's just an incredible person. So shout him out.
Thanks. Kim?
Do you, is it mandatory participation in the non-anonymous survey? Or what kind of participation level do you have?
Yeah, that's, that's an awesome question. Because the first time we ran it, I made the mistake of being like, it's, you know, all students have responded. And then Brian, our data scientist, was like, yeah, except for the 150 who didn't answer over here. What's going on there? But that, that in itself actually creates some powerful data because what you can then do is, you know, have the advisor sit down with the student and say, hey, I noticed you didn't answer, you know, I noticed that you didn't participate in this. Why is that? And then, oh, speaking of equity, oh, man, our students who are at the tech centers didn't take it because we didn't think of them because we had blind spots because they're not in the building right now. Yeah, so we had, and what about our students with intensive special needs? Or what about our students who found difficulty accessing that through language barriers? So you get a lot of learning no matter what. And a lot of times what will happen is students will say, I'd rather have this as a one-on-one conversation. And so we had the ability for the advisor to mark that and those kinds of things. But.
That's awesome. So while not required, highly encouraged in ways of getting towards the information through connection regardless.
Yeah, first pass when we do it, because we stopped the whole school to do it. And we do it during advisory. So we'll get probably like 70, 70, 75% of the students that respond electronically. Some will do it ahead of time because they're looking forward to it and they really want to share their voices. And then, and, and then, you know, you actually, and then, and then you have to kind of do the follow-up from there, nag people a little bit, deal with kind of outlier situations. The one powerful thing I've really learned is you also need to have your school counseling staff, don't give this on a Friday. You know, we had a moment where we gave it, wanted to follow up with a student because that focus score, she popped up on the top of the list. I'm like, oh, that's, that's strange. And then went to find her in school, wasn't in school, mom didn't know she wasn't at school, was in a dangerous situation, were able to, and I mean, it was just sort of like, by the grace of God, we were able to intervene in that situation. You know, so you just have to be prepared. There are some tricks, but.
And I think the other thing that is striking to me is the opportunity to be asked those questions three times a year. Sometimes we get a survey once a year, it's at the end of the school year, people are checked out. And I just, I think that despite best intentions, again, back to authenticity, this seems genuinely interested in knowing, particularly when you ask a few times a year on a schedule that kids can anticipate and look forward to. And they start to, I'm suspecting they find it valuable enough and that they, they see there to be a response. Did you, have you needed or has there been special support you've provided to the educators who lead advisories, which I'm sure is everybody in the building or most, to be able to support this? Because it sounds like it may not be in everybody's wheelhouse.
A student noticing. What we've done is we actually changed the start time of our day to 8:45. That was another COVID silver lining, if you're looking for COVID silver lining. So people didn't really ask some questions after, after the hybrid year. And that's given our professional staff essentially eight to 8:45 every single morning, where you can, you can prepare for the day, but we can also have professional, our, our engaged teams meet every Thursday. And it's, it's there that we do training. So much better to have it be weekly as opposed to like the monthly faculty meeting. And you can get people, and that way you can say, especially the kind of message to the staff, hey, we really, this is the thing we care like most about. We're not going to deviate from this. Of course, we end up deviating from it, to be honest. But, you know, at least the messaging's there. So, and you've got to have that support from people because you can do some harm unintentionally.
Thank you. And I think to Lyle's point, that is respectful of the educators as well. So I'm sure the willingness to lean in when feeling supported and similar to creating space for the students in their conversations probably has benefits or returns to you that, that make it all the better for students. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I think we're going to wrap this up, but just want to thank Adam again for coming today. And, you know, particularly right now, when we're hearing a lot from students that they're feeling disconnected, they're feeling anxious. There's, there's an awful lot in the world that is taking up a lot of negative space. And I think it's really helpful that, you know, I think what I'm hearing is this kind of started out with like a DEI perspective, but it's really sort of encompassing mental health generally for all students and giving people the, like, knowledge that they're being heard and that they matter. And it's terrific work. And thank you so much for, you know, giving us all a lot to think about. And hopefully other schools out there too can be inspired by your work. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. I really appreciate it. Good luck the rest of the meeting, everybody.
Thank you. All right. So with that, I think we are ready to revisit Agenda Item G, which was the Addison Northwest School District and Mount Abraham Unified School District merger proposal. So I don't know if board members have seen this, but we did receive updated language from the study committee that has hit your inbox. I believe Tracy Rend has indicated too, that she's going to put it up on the screen. And the new language has been underlined. So you'll be able to quickly focus on it. So maybe Ms. Rend, I'll turn it over to you to put that up and just kind of take us back where we left off.
Can you see the draft language on my, on the screen?
Yes.
Yay. I've learned from those before me. Keith Morrell, I believe, is here to explain the committee's discussion and the changes that were made. Keith, are you there?
I am here.
All right. I will control the screen. Just tell me what you need me to do.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Yeah, so Tracy stated the added or amended language is underlined here. And we consulted with our lawyer in the process of drafting and adding this language. It's fairly straightforward. We, the discussion revolved around trying to change as little as possible about the language while addressing the board's concerns about clarity around whether the votes would be co-mingled or not. So I'll just read aloud really quickly the amended language for each. On the first section regarding schools not closing for the first four years of operation, we added, for school with students from more than one town, the vote will be co-mingled. It should be noted that not all of the elementary schools within the two districts serve more than, there's only, currently, there's only one elementary school that actually serves more than a single town. That's for Jen's Elementary School. And in Section 2B, we added, per Article 14A and 16VSA 742, the vote will be a co-mingled count of all of the towns of the ANSD.
Thank you. Are there any questions by members of the board, comments?
There's one other thing that we have added, but not specifically to these articles. So I'll hold off until it's a good moment.
Okay. So any, any further comments or questions on the clarifications that have been presented? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the other change?
This second change comes in the report, not in the Articles of Agreement. The, the unfinished statement that you called for our attention here, we've completed thus. In the unlikely event that some school buildings may not be needed for educational purposes in the future, provisions for disposal of school property are based upon the provisions for dispose, seems a little redundant, just going to keep going. For disposal of school property outlined in ANWSD and MAUSD's Articles of Agreement and provide for a return of property to towns for public use or sale per the provisions in the law.
Great. Any comments or questions about that added language? Okay. Any further concluding thoughts before we put this to a vote? Okay, hearing none. I believe that I'm going to turn this over to Gabrielle. We've got two motions that we will be voting on. And second, let me just find my paper here. Sorry, I don't know what I did with my piece of paper.
One item, Jennifer, if they're making changes to their report. And this is a really nitpicky thing, but on page 27 at the bottom, it does not change the outcome of this report in any way. But I'm not sure their numbers add up in the columns that go Town 2000 and Town 2010. But it does not change anything in the report. But they would just might want to look at that.
Okay, thank you for catching.
Townspeople and I like to point out minor errors, so. There we go.
All right.
The only one I could find.
Thank you. Gabrielle has two motions that she's going to read. And just so that we're all clear, when we get to motion two, we are going to incorporate the fact that there were amendments that were made to the original report that was submitted. So it will reference both the original report and then the amendments that were made as of today's date.
Can I just ask one question on the, the First Amendment? The, the one under the vote of multiple towns related to elementary? That doesn't reference the law. And the next bullet down does, the change does reference the law? I didn't know if that was intentional. I don't think it matters. I just, I just clicked out of what was just sent to us. So I'm sorry. Let me be more specific. The, I think it was a question for them that I, I'm just, as I'm looking more closely at it, under Bullet 1, the sentence that was added, doesn't reference the law as being the requirement that it co-mingle the votes? And the sentence added under Bullet 2 does reference the law? And I don't know.
Raised. I'm wondering if that's Donna with an answer.
It's Mary Kate.
Oh, Mary Kate. I can't see who it is. So if you'd like to answer, that's terrific.
There we go. I didn't initially have access. Yeah, so when we looked at the statute and discussed this with our attorney, the first instance only has a co-mingle vote of those specific towns. And so it wasn't clear that the statute applied where it was just those specific towns. It clearly applies when it's the towns of the whole AD.
Okay.
Thinking, yeah, so that's, was, yeah, that's.
Perfect. I, I think, I think your edits, your, all of your edits make the clarification we are looking for. And I just, I didn't know if there was a particular reason. It sounds like there was, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I see a hand raised.
It's Mary Kate's.
Okay. Okay. All right. Are we ready for the first motion? Okay. So Gabrielle, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. I move that pursuant to 16VSA Section 706. And after due consideration, the Vermont State Board of Education finds that the proposed formation of a new unified union school district by the Addison Northwest School District and the Mount Abraham Unified School District, and possibly the Lincoln School District, one, is in the best interest of the state, the students, and the school districts. And two, aligns with the policy set forth in 16VSA Section 701.
Thank you. So you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Okay, it's been seconded by Lyle Jepson. Any discussion? Can we just do a head, like, we don't need to do a roll call on this, do we? Dan, Donna?
If it's not unanimous, maybe, but otherwise if.
Okay.
You're asking, asking my, my perspective on that as a non-lawyer?
He's a more seasoned person on these meetings.
I would see, I see, oh, there we go. Emily is raising her hand. She knows more about board policies than I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, under the open meeting law, since the board is meeting with a quorum or more through electronic means, a non-unanimous vote should be taken by roll. But a unanimous vote can just be a voice vote.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that in mind, let's start off by saying, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any extensions? Okay, it appears that the motion has carried, has carried and you have approved it. Gabrielle, I'll turn it back to you for the second motion.
Am I, okay, there we go. I move that pursuant to 16VSA Section 706. And after due consideration, the Vermont State Board of Education approves the report and Articles of Agreement prepared by the merger study committee compromised of the Addison Northwest School District and the Mount Abraham Unified School District dated June 27, 2022.
And I'm just going to tack on, and as amended on July 20, 2022.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Kim Gleason. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying no. Any abstentions? Tammy, I see that your hand is raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the study committee for both an incredibly comprehensive and thoughtful report, but also for the flexibility of coming back together to consider our feedback in such a timely way and turning this back around. I just want to say that I appreciate their flexibility and commitment to the process in doing that. Thank you.
So just to button things up, it appears that we have approved the second motion and it has been adopted. Any further concluding remarks? I'll just echo Tammy's comments and say that we do appreciate the scheduling of the special meeting concurrent with our meeting today so that this could be accomplished as expeditiously as possible. And again, it's really clear that a lot of work went into this. And we wish you the best of luck going forward. All right. And I think that brings us to Item M, public to be heard. We're a little bit off schedule, but if any members of the public wish to be heard, please raise your hand. Okay, I'll just leave that hanging out there for a minute. Were there any further future agenda items that anyone thought of that I can tack on? Okay, so we will follow up with a doodle poll. I'll follow up with Oliver about, you know, maybe bifurcating the meeting and the retreat in September, just to make this as user-friendly as possible. But we'll follow up with the doodle poll. And unless there's, yes.
No, I was just going to suggest that because the timelines that we discussed and you read in the Lincoln School District update, I'm just realizing how many timelines and deadlines are coming for us. And I'm wondering if that can just be created. I see work plan in that future agenda. If that just can be a single document, maybe it's what you read as an update. But I think it isn't unique to Lincoln. I think it spans the many areas of work that we're handling right now in a pretty tight timeline. So that might be helpful for everybody, what we are anticipating and what deadlines.
Yeah, Oliver had put together the Addison County Governance Issues. This was a presentation that he did for the June meeting that does have Ripton and Lincoln, a few key milestones, it's sort of put out by calendar year 2022 and 2023. I think that's a really good starting point. If there's anything to be added to that, I think we could, you know, certainly update it. But I don't know if that kind of answers.
Yeah, I just was thinking, there's like a new September 1 date, and there's separate bodies of work happening. And I think it may be beneficial to have a single document that we're updating as it happens versus a slide in a slide presentation. So it might be just something, again, that's a handout for the next meeting. I don't think where whatever timeline makes sense for everybody that can keep us on track.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Oh, and I see Tom Lovett, I suggest more discussion on mental health engagement efforts like those at CVU. So yes, I'll tack that on to be discussed. Thanks, Tom. And I'm sorry, I missed who moved to adjourn.
I did, Kim.
You, Kim. Is there a second? All second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you all. This was a lot of work that we got through this morning. And at this point, we stand in adjournment. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Juan, thanks.